Good afternoon, everybody. We're here to first consider a special session, so in order to do that, I need a motion.
So move. Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker to go into special session. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We're in special session first to consider the approval of the IAFF 1605 contract.
Okay, am I reading this? Are we ready? I hereby move for mayor and council approval of collecting bargaining agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the International Association of Fairfighters Local 1605. This agreement shall run for a period commencing on July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016. The terms of the agreement are outlined in the attached memo.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes, I think this is a fair agreement. It's unfortunate from the maneuvering that's going on by this bargaining unit that some people think it's not fair that the city can afford more. And if we really had our druthers, I'm not sure we can afford this, but we've done it. We're going to find a way to carry it through. It's going to be very hard in 2016.
Okay, thank you. And actually, I was just thinking maybe we should have our human resources director come up and basically summarize what the terms are since for the benefit of everyone in the viewing audience doesn't have access to the material.
Okay, so talk about the term. Of course, it's July 1st of 2014 through June 30th of 2016. As far as wages, members will receive a 2% cost of living increase effective retroactively to January 1st, 2014. On July 1st of this year, members will receive an additional 2% cost of living increase and one longevity step on the wage scale. On July 1st, 2015, members will receive an additional 2% cost of living increase and advance an additional one longevity step on their wage scale. Additionally, the scale is being revised to remove one step, so it will cap out at 23 steps instead of 24. And then the rest are really de minimis operational changes, uniforms, and then again, the rest is more operational.
And then, of course, the costs in fiscal year 14 is $43,885.77. In FY 15, it's $260,142. And in fiscal year 16, it's $254,147 for a total of approximately $558,175.
Right, and again, it's also important to note the city continues to absorb increases in healthcare, pension, and workers' compensation.
Retirement.
Yes.
And retirement.
Yep, pension.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Oh, Mr. Brubaker.
I'm sorry, but I do want to elaborate. It was said all during the petition campaign on the streets that the city did not meet its promises. The only promise I made to anybody last election was to try to find a balance between the city, the employees, and most of all, our citizens. I think if anything, labor contracts grouped together have been as well as we could do for the employees, they might even be up there on the continuum a little bit, so towards that interest. So again, it's probably more than we can afford across the board, but we're going to try to meet it. And with this thing about not having good faith, it's just the opposite, and I resent being accused of that.
I'm sure we'll get into more of that further in our agenda. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Contract is approved. Next up is the approval of a resolution for the FY 2014-15 Annual Action Plan, CDBG.
Mayor, if I move for adoption of a resolution approving the FY 2014-15 Annual Action Plan and Budget Detail for the Community Development Block Grant Program, authorizing the mayor to file an application for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $646,183 for the CDBG program, and further also authorizing the mayor to execute all other documents relating to the city's CDBG program for fiscal year 14-15.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. The resolution is approved. Okay, that will end our special session, and at this time, I would like to invite our guests from the Maryland Symphony Orchestra up. But before I do that, let me recognize that I believe we have some folks from Troop 103, the Boy Scouts, is that right? Raise your hand if you're here from Troop. Okay, great. And also, we have, is there someone here from Troop 65 as well? Perhaps they'll be showing up later. Anyway, just wanted to acknowledge your presence and thank you for being here. So at this time, I'd like to have our friends from the Symphony Orchestra come up, and we're celebrating the 33rd season of the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, and I want to present this certificate of special recognition. Please come gather and face the audience here. This is in special recognition of the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, whereas businesses and organizations that invest in the betterment of our community deserve our most sincere recognition and appreciation, and whereas the Maryland Symphony Orchestra is celebrating the launch of its 33rd season with a number of activities this week, June 2nd through 6th, 2014, and whereas since 1982, Maryland Symphony Orchestra has become the cornerstone of the Washington County art scene, bringing this unique art form to people of all backgrounds. The Maryland Symphony Orchestra's influence has reached audiences far beyond western Maryland. Residents of south-central Pennsylvania, West Virginia's Eastern Panhandle, the Shenandoah Valley of Virginia, and the Baltimore/Washington metro area are drawn to the orchestra's concerts held at the historic Maryland Theater in the heart of Hagerstown's award-winning A&E district, and whereas it is organizations such as the Maryland Symphony Orchestra which have a positive impact on Hagerstown, making it a great place to live, work, and be entertained. Now therefore, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby thank and recognize the Maryland Symphony Orchestra for their investment in our community and extend best wishes for a wonderful 33rd season. Mike Jones, thank you so much for being here, and would you like to say a few words about what's going on?
No, we don't need the microphone here.
Well, we need it for the folks at home.
Oh.
So I'll hold it for you.
Okay. Well, this is celebrate the MSO week from yesterday through Friday. Tomorrow, we have an event up at the University Plaza, and then on Thursday at the library from 4:00 to about 6:00, we are having a formal season launch. We invite everybody to stop by. Elizabeth will be there to talk about the season. But I would like to say just a couple of words on behalf of Elizabeth and Jim Peirney, our board, indeed, the whole MSO family, which is, you know, we are a part of this community, and thank you for everything that the city does on behalf of the orchestra in support both financially and in so many different ways. We are going to continue to strive as we move forward to become an even better resource for this community, so thank you very much, and I'd like to give a shout out to the Maryland Theater for all they do and work.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Their camera shot, I mean, if they want to call, any of you guys want to be in the picture? Yeah. I'm their designated phone off person.
Yeah, he is. He's the person.
We can do it, though. Please. Come on up. Aaron will tell us where to stand. She's our, yeah.
Director of photography.
She makes sure we all look good all the time. Oh, yeah, my pleasure. Thank you all. Look forward to it. Got my tickets, my season subscription. Looking forward to everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for everything.
Yes, and apparently, there may be some rain in the forecast, I understand, tomorrow?
No.
No, never, Lou Scali has assured you?
It looks like a beautiful day.
Oh, okay, but just in case, I wanted to inform the council, it's my understanding if in fact there is rain, the indoor, yeah, the inside of the 60 West Washington Street will be the cover.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the second item on our agenda, the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area funding. I'm going to invite Julie Rahm and Al Martin from the Convention and Visitors Bureau up to talk about their requests. Welcome, Julie and Al.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Bye.
Hi.
Good afternoon. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you this afternoon. This is something that we were approached about, I guess, a number of months ago, and it's something that, as you can see from the materials that we submitted, and as part of the packet, that the city, well, this heritage, Civil War Heritage Area has existed since 2006, and we started receiving grant money locally at the city and other entities and operations beginning in fiscal year 2007. Prior to, just recently, in fact, through the current end of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 14, our current fiscal year, Frederick County had been paying for the local match that, of a state grant that was funding the administration of this area. And basically, that grant was providing support for an executive director, Liz Chateau, as well as some of the other activities that the organization was supporting and conducting on a day-to-day basis for the three county area of Carroll, Frederick, and Washington County. Washington County probably is the area that has most of the Civil War sites, although Carroll County had sites on the road to Gettysburg, and Frederick County, the same thing, Antietam, South Mountain, and also the Battle of Monocacy. Beginning this year, we received a request that Frederick County was no longer going to pay 100% of it, and they worked out an arrangement where the local cost of $75,000 of cash plus other in-kind support would be split between the three counties. So Frederick County and Carroll County have agreed to support their $25,000 share. We're now trying to work through how Washington County will provide that support. The CBB board has met, and we already are providing support for this through in-kind services, supporting a visitor center at the Newcomer House, I believe, isn't it, Julie? At the battlefield, and also some part-time staff support for this as well. And in addition, we've committed to providing $15,000 of cash support. We are making a request of both the city and the county for $5,000 each to help support the rest of the local share, and particularly since both the city and the county have benefited greatly from some of the capital grants that have been received. As you can see in the history of the grants over the years, support in the county has actually, on these grants, has totaled over $750,000 since the program started in fiscal year '07.
And I understand Washington County has the most land area within the Civil War Heritage Area.
Correct. That's absolutely correct.
Candidly, I'm not interested in being the only municipality in western Maryland, central Maryland, to do this. I mean, Williamsport, I see in there, I see not one, not one municipality in Frederick County's contributing, not one municipality in Carroll County's contributing, and not one municipality in Washington County is going to ask other than us. And candidly, this is, this is getting too typical, and I think this is going to be the beginning of a long day of me saying it, that every person that lives in this county pays county taxes. I'm tired of the city being the only municipality in the state that gets blackmailed to pay in a million dollars for a county library, and then does not have a county sheriff there, but expects the city to take care of the security there. And this needs to go to the county, this doesn't need to go to the city. This is Frederick County's putting in $25,000, Carroll County's putting in $25,000, and here we are, asking Washington County to contribute $5,000 and us to match what the entire county puts in. If you get Funkstown, Williamsport, Sharpsburg, and Hancock to put in $1,000 apiece, I'll go for $1,000, but I'm not going to be the only municipality that does this myself.
Is it correct that Frederick City does not contribute, or Westminster?
We do not know how Frederick County or Carroll County has gathered their money. They have contributed from one, one check that comes through one entity. Both of them are listed as the county government, but we do not know how they gather those funds. They asked the CBB to do the same thing, but our board was not prepared to do that. They wanted $15,000 to come from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, from the hotel motel tax, and then the other five to come from the people that benefit from it. And so that's why we came to you for five, and the county for five.
And the city was one of the largest grant recipients of the capital grants over the years.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I have thought. I respectfully disagree with my colleague. I think this is a very good program. Gee, I was in the legislature when it was started. And the city has benefited immensely, more than 120 times what we're being asked to put in. And I frankly, when we can't afford to support the potential for future grants, which we're certainly going to be going after with even a better reason in the future than the past for $5,000, I think there's something wrong.
Let me be clear about the, this is not a matching grant, is that correct?
This is a matching grant. They have to receive $75,000 in order to receive $75,000 from the state. So to equal $150,000 for their budget.
So you're trying to raise the 75.
25 from Washington County.
And do we have 25 from Washington?
We have $15,000 from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're-
It's not Washington County.
Right, and we're asking the county and the city for the other five to partner with us.
The 15, though, is Washington County, county room tax money is, will be our source of funds.
It's Hagerstown, it's the CBB room tax money that is, it's not-
And I would note-
The county uses it, but it's not the county money.
I would note, looking, looking at this, fiscal year 13, Town of Williamsport, $1,200, Town of Williamsport, $23,000, so Town of Williamsport gets $24,013, excuse me.
Yeah, you're okay.
And then in 2014, the Town of Williamsport picks up $90,000. So they're into over $110,000 in the last two fiscal years, and why isn't Williamsport being asked to do the $5,000? I mean, that's my problem. It's, I'm being told how Hagerstown is the recipient of all this stuff, and in the last two years, Williamsport gets $115,000, museum gets $1,700. Hagerstown gets basically nothing in the last two years. They get over $100,000, and you're here asking us and not Williamsport. Why not Williamsport, and why not Sharpsburg? What towns have more Civil War heritage than Sharpsburg and Williamsport? But it's Hagerstown we come to, and Williamsport's gotten $115,000. The program is great. I have, I totally agree with you, Councilmember Munson, the program's a great program, but I'm tired, after going through what we just went through with this budget, where we can't afford anything, and here we go. And I want to know, why is it us? Why is it this municipality the one that gets asked? Because when I see $115,000 going to Williamsport in the last two years, why aren't they being asked?
I'm not clear. The CBB is asking us to match, is that who's asking? I mean, there's a big match-
There's a, there's a big match.
The large matching in 75. The CBB board said, they'll give 15, but they have to get, match that from local government?
No, we're asking that the, we were asking local government, county and city, to contribute five to equal our $25,000 portion to the full 75 that will then get a match.
So the $15,000 from the CBB plus $10,000-
Correct.
-potentially from the city and county would equal the 25, which would be a third of the three counties that need it.
Right.
Right.
And I understand the frustrations that you're expressing, and I do think that the CBB does a great job in terms of promoting and getting people to come to this area. Absolutely outstanding, fabulous job. I think the way that the hotel motel tax is distributed is broken. I think all of the money should go to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The fact that the county distributes this money to municipalities so that Hancock can get a new town floor, a floor in City Hall, doesn't bring tourists to Washington County. And so I think the original legislation that created the hotel motel tax should be revisited. I, I'm not against $5,000 in funding. I think it will be a good faith on our part effort to show, and the reason I think that is because when we hear in a couple of weeks from urban partners that a heritage center should be part of a proposed catalyst project, I believe that the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area should be headquartered right here in Hagerstown, at that heritage center, so that we really do own it in a sense, and not to mention the fact that we have the largest landmass of all the three counties for the Civil War. But I think, you know, at least in this case, you know, because the request is here in front of us, there's, I'm assuming, a deadline to get this money together for the-
June 15th, they have to present the letters, or they fail, if they fail to meet the $75,000, they will not receive the matching.
June 15th.
And they won't receive the match from the state. They just need a letter of commitment.
Right.
They do not need the money at that time.
Right.
They do, however, so that you know, July is when they do, or August, they'll announce their mini-grant opportunities. That's $500,000 to $25,000 that you can apply for, and then they have their non-capital grants of $50,000, and their capital grants of $100,000 that will be able to be applied for in November, December, and places like the Maryland Theater, that's a downtown historical site, if they needed new seating, they could apply for up to $100,000 of that as a capital improvement.
For projects that might be identified from your work with urban partners that you all would prioritize as part of your strategic redevelopment plans.
And there's no limit of how many grants they'll, they can receive.
Julie, so can we anticipate that if this requirement of $5,000 continues, that in subsequent years, you will go to the municipalities that Lou has mentioned and ask them for money?
I think we could definitely do that.
I mean, it sounds like in 13 days or 15, 20 days, whatever time period you had, you probably couldn't get that done since the town councils.
But it certainly doesn't make sense for Frederick County to pay for everybody.
Right, right.
Washington County should step up and fulfill our portion of it, and I agree with, I totally, you know, I sympathize with what Councilmember Metzner is saying in terms of the budgetary constraints we have, the fact that, you know, we have a county with a lot larger of a budget than we do, but we're being asked to supply an equal amount. But for this particular initiative and the potential that it has, especially with regard to a heritage area center, I think it would-
By the way, I would just note that there is some indication. Frederick County is providing $25,000 in cash 100% from hotel tax revenue.
And you do.
Okay. Carroll County is $25,000 in cash committed, doesn't indicate where, but Frederick County's coming 100% from their hotel tax revenue.
And that would be the logical source for that.
Lou, let me make this point, will you? That makes sense in this day and age. When the bill was drawing up, drawn up for our tip jars was originally passed, it, that didn't make sense in those days. I know, I was, that was one of my big deals when I was there. If it were, if there were changes made these days, I'd certainly be agreeing with you and the mayor, but the fact is, we're going to benefit greatly out of this. And I noticed the first grant, the very first grant that was given, was $55,000 to the city of Hagerstown, and here's another grant for $100,000, the city of Hagerstown, and an investment of $5,000 to grab that kind of money, plus the potential for a headquarters, which certainly you get that message, is pretty impressive.
Who determines what grants are applied for and approves what goes to, to get the grant money?
The grant money comes from the state and federal government, and-
But who determines what projects to ask for?
I don't know exactly who that person is. I would say it's Liz Chateau, and Rachel Nicholas. And there is a board that reviews the grants, but I don't know how they choose which grants move forward. I apologize.
May I ask staff, are we considering any grants on this? Are we actively considering any grants if we had grants rejected?
No, we, we had applied the last couple of years because we didn't have any projects that we thought would fit the program, but certainly in future years, anytime something comes along, we look to this program. This program has been great for us in the past.
It has been.
I like to-
And I don't have a problem with it. And we really have turned our nose with Civil War for a long time, and finally, it now has started to take part of what we should have been doing a long time ago. And when the Civil War Museum was in hopes of being able to be downtown, which was many years ago, and everybody found a reason for why it shouldn't have been, I think now it's a positive.
I think part of this argument goes way beyond the $5,000, if you don't pardon us. Later on in this meeting, several council members have asked us to, to review the contributions we make to other agencies. CASA, Art Museum, Character Counts, Community Rescue, Hagerstown Municipal Band. So a number of council members feel that we can reduce those contributions, so, you know, it's hard to do one, especially since many of us feel that there's a lot of flex, especially in the half of the CBB money that doesn't go to the CBB, as well as what goes to the CBB. Note what Frederick's doing. So that's the difficulty here, not that, I think probably everybody likes the program.
Well, and I think this is going to have to be a continuing conversation when it comes to the hotel motel tax, the potential there for possibly funding projects in the future that are tourism-related in the city. Obviously, that is going to be a continuing conversation, but in terms of the matter at hand, I do think we need to consider it on its own merits in terms of what we're going to do with it.
I know, I think we should consider it in relation to these other, these other things, these other worth, very worthwhile things. We can tell them later whether that fits within what we want to do with, you know, almost half a million dollars that we have here.
So I have two-
I don't see how we can approve that, and then on some of the, you know, without considering it in relation to the others, and then cut, maybe cut some of these other agents.
Well, I think all they're looking for today is a letter of commitment, so-
The point was made that next year, this is not going to be an issue, at least it's not much, because they're going after the municipalities next year. So next year, this might be down to $1,000.
Or maybe we'll have convinced the county commissioners that they should foot the bill for everybody in the county, since it is a county-
Well, yeah, that too.
...function, and they get 50% of the hotel motel tax.
Well, then, I think we all better get to the county and set in government up there and say what we feel.
Well, and, and of course, this is an election year, so let's-
Instead of doing it here, and I think that we need to show our faces there.
Well, let's make sure that everybody is aware that it's an issue in the election and get people to take a position on, on their distribution of hotel motel tax money. So they're requesting a letter of commitment. We don't have to identify where the money's coming from right now. Of course, we'd have to do that at some point, and it may be as a result of changes we make later in our meeting today in terms of agency contributions. I'm curious about Mr. Alshauer's position.
You know, for me, it's, it's a matter of simple mathematics. You have three counties that participate in a program. Two of those three counties are contributing $25,000. The third county, which is an equal partner in that program, should contribute $25,000 out of its hotel motel proceeds, just like the other counties do. You have 12 municipalities in Frederick County, nine in this, and five in Carroll County, none of which participate in direct financing of this program. It is part and parcel to why we have CVBs and tourism councils to obtain these very sources. I just, I, I'm not following the logic in saying, you know what, in this one particular county, we're going to do things completely opposite- we're going to do things completely opposite of what we naturally expect, and those other partner counties have come to expect and take that responsibility for. None of that makes sense.
We're going to go to the poorest jurisdiction in the county and ask for the money. Tommy Williamsport and Boonsborough are not wealthier than we are on a per capita basis. And that's all, I mean, I totally support the program.
Well, I don't care where we have to go, but I think that now reality is, is that they don't have that much time to do anything with unless they go and they get a consensus from either the town of Williamsport and the town of Funkstown and that, if you can do that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you, and I don't mean to. Unless, I'll take you down, we're in the county yet.
We have all the information at the county.
Right. All they have to do is say to the county, we need $10,000 from you. The other counties are contributing $25,000. And if the county says no to a $10,000 contribution, I mean, you know, we sit here and we say it's fine, and listen, I'm the first guy, over the last 19 years, I'm the first guy to sit here and say, you know, it's only $5,000 in a $100 million budget. But the problem is, their budget substantially, it's more than twice ours. You're asking them for the same amount you're asking us? If they can't pony up $10,000, that's as bad as us not ponying up $3,000. And if the county can't pony up $10,000, and they obviously don't think it's the program's worth it. But I, you know, I'm not trying to put anybody down because the $5,000 isn't that much, and I am convinced that when we get done this, $5,000 will be available if that's what we decide to do. But I think we ought to just move on. If you have three votes for it, that's great.
Well, I don't think I have three votes for a letter of commitment at this point. Maybe Marty's, I don't know. Marty, are you on the fence?
Have you gone to the county?
All we have is all the information to Mr. Murray.
We have not been able to get on their agenda. We have spoken with the county commissioner or the county administrator, but have not gotten on the agenda.
Did we contribute last year to this?
We didn't. This is the first year they became their own 501(c)(3) away from the Frederick County Tourism Board.
That's right.
The first year that Frederick didn't do it.
Right. Frederick sent $75,000 towards it every year up to this point.
Oh, no, it's horrible to do that, Lou.
No, we are still sending Mr. Murray the information different times that he's requested. He's trying to gather his information so that he can put us on the agenda.
It's difficult, I'm telling you.
In response to Lou, Lou, I think we have a legitimate right to expect the county to put a considerable sum of money into a new school for the arts building, refurbished Maryland Theater building. And I guess what I'm saying is, we can afford to pony up $5,000 for one year. But the county, the county is going to be expected by us to put a lot more money into downtown, the heart of Hagerstown.
And Councilmember, when you say that, I appreciate it so much, but let's look at it from a different perspective. The county is asking the city to pony up seven figures for education, for county education, which the board is telling us is going to save them $70 million. I'm more than willing to do it. But when you say we're asking the county to pony up money, for what? For a school, which, who is totally responsible for the schools in Washington County? The county! We're the only municipality in the state that the county comes to and says, we want money for a school. We're the only municipality in the state that the county comes to and says, we want money for a library, and we've always said yes to it. And I'm not convinced at all that the county's anywhere close to ponying up the money that we're going to, that the Board of Education is asking them to do, because let's be clear, it's the Board of Education that is making a request for the county and the city to fund what is traditionally the responsibility of the Board of Education. And let's all be honest, I don't see how we do that project at all if we don't get any state support for anything, which so far we have not seen because we want to... And again, I don't mean to argue with you because I agree with you, Councilmember. You and I agree, the $5,000 is very affordable. It has nothing to do with the money. It has to do with me only with this... It's just frustrating. I would love for you to be able to come in here and tell us you've been to the county and you've asked them for the 10 grand and they said no to you, that it had to be five and five, but, you know, I think the county needs to react. If we're going to do it, it should at least be some acknowledgement of seven and three. I mean, why should this municipality be asked to pony up the same amount of money that the county's being asked? And then we're the first ones to be asked? The only municipality in three counties. That's my problem. It's not this project, it is project after project after project. And this year, we saw a budget that's killing us. That's all. And like I say, I don't mean to keep discussing it, I don't know what else.
Well, since you can't get on the agenda, okay, up at the commissioners, then next week when they have their meeting, all right? And the citizens can then speak, okay, because they afforded the opportunity to speak at each one, all right? Then I can go. I can be the councilperson coming in, since we've gone through all of this tonight, and since we, you were not allowed to, well, we're not given the opportunity to be put on their agenda. I can then ask, if they please, okay, would, since there has been all of this discussion tonight, that certainly we need to have this. And that's the only thing that I can do for you because I think we're going to be outnumbered here tonight. And if I had the $5,000, Al, I'd have it right on the dime for you, but I don't have it. So I will...
We have to have a letter mailed to them dated by June 15 from the...
They need to know before the end of this fiscal year so they have their match in place for the new...
Right, so you have, you have, and you're not on next week's agenda for the county commissioners?
They will not. At Lou, trust me.
Well, how do you get a letter from the county by timeframe we're talking about?
They sent the information asking.
We sent the information to Greg, and we're waiting to hear back to see if we're on next week's or not.
I will, I will go along with the $5,000 for this year, but I want to see some good applications from us if we can get something in. I mean, coming to us is not going to be a habit, it's not going to be, I think the whole 25 ought to come out of CVB, not going to us. And where you go to the smaller municipalities, especially the ones that are active in the Civil War, and get some contributions. And we are the poorest jurisdiction, and here we are. And like I said, we're going after these. But I will go along with it because I'm, I think that we want to have our chips and play for other projects.
Yeah, and there are, and of course with Kathy...
But I really hate it because we're looking at these tonight.
Well, and I don't, you know, and as much as I hate to say no to, I can say no to tonight, okay?
So I, again, I'm like, Lou, I agree with the whole thing, but I...
I think we're all on the same sheet of music, and I think it's not a bad thing to just be approved three to two.
But I want to see us get something, and I don't want to see this repeated next year. It's just a habit to come to us. And don't forget, 20% of the money you get from the county comes from us, our taxpayers.
The city is not the hole in a county donut.
Amen.
The city is not the hole in a county donut.
Well, and...
To figure out something else.
And I do, again, I'll say, I do believe we have to have a conversation with the county commissioners about this hotel motel tax. Not only how it's currently distributed and how that differs from the original legislation that was passed to create the hotel motel tax for the purpose of building a stadium, but also for reasons that we should look at raising the hotel motel tax and using the proceeds to fund some of the projects that are going to be proposed in Urban Partners. So this will not be the end of the conversation, but certainly the beginning, but I'm glad at least we could...
Either raise it or use the economic development funds that are distributed, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars. Focus those differently. Because that's where they have, they can write the $10,000 anytime they want to from that.
Al, please let me know if they...
It's just your CVB.
I want to know. No problem.
So we're okay with the $5,000? We got a majority saying...
Under those conditions, I don't want to see it back next year.
One time at this point.
We are really struggling.
And we do need to acknowledge Al and Julie because I hear more than...
They're volunteer board members.
That gets beat up. That gets beat up. As much as you don't want to get beat up, that's...
Yeah, we thank you for your work. And Kathy's going to give you unbelievably good projects to get through.
Al's been used to be beat up.
We don't want to see this opportunity go away from Washington County. That's why we're spearheading it.
That's why I'm doing it, and I think if we need to fight our battles, we need to use a bigger arena.
Unfortunately, I wish we would have known that Frederick County was doing all of this, and that way at least we could have had some breathing space, but, you know, this is it.
We apologize for the late notice. It's just been one of those things that we have been without our executive director. We're optimistic to get that position built very soon and thankful that we've had our existing staff and volunteers to help step up and keep these programs in place.
Well, like I said, I think the CVB does an excellent job of promoting Washington County and Hagerstown. When I met with Julie, what was it, last week? She, you know, one of the things I'm most impressed about is the data-driven nature of what they do there. And she told me that the, this is just an interesting aside, that folks who travel from Canada to Florida, the snowbirds, think that Halfway Boulevard is named for them because it's halfway between Ontario and Florida. And so, so they're actually starting to market that in Canada to, you know, attract those travelers through here. And also, one of the things that Urban Partners has identified is that the Civil War heritage that we have here is an unexploited or under-exploited resource that we have that we can use for economic development.
It is really unfortunate, because if we would have gotten on the page years ago...
And I'll just reiterate, I think that we should try to make Hagerstown the headquarters of this heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. And there are eight heritage areas in the state of Maryland, correct?
And Liz is more than willing at any time to come and give you a presentation on everything you can do and how you can use the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. The only reason we did not bring her with us today is I did not want you to think that she was here as a sales pitch for her. So I wanted it to be Alan, myself, that way we were just talking to you one-on-one.
And that's fine, but it really, it is an eye-opener when it comes to the Civil War because I asked the question, and this is not pertaining to this, but how did we miss the medical part of it not being here, okay?
Well, that's water under the bridge.
Well, you know what? Because, right, I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous that we were not on board. Hollow ground is another thing. They bypassed us going to Gettysburg. We should have been right there, and we weren't.
Well, we'll get you a letter and...
Appreciate that, and we look forward to working with you on the opportunities that might come out of the Urban Partners study.
Here's our sample letter. I don't know if you want to pass that up.
Sure.
We're going to, we just finished it, so we'll scan and email you a copy as well.
That'd be great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Does anyone know why Halfway is called Halfway by?
Yes, it's halfway between Hagerstown and Williamsport.
Oh, okay. It's not, it's not Canada and Florida.
No. Well, depends where in Canada, now Toronto or Montreal.
I thought it was London and Walthamstow.
Anyway, the next item on our agenda is the Maryland Theater Seating Project and Funding. And we have Benito Vatalana, did I pronounce that correctly? And Jessica Green with the Maryland Theater.
Thank you for having us again. I have two handouts for everyone. That's for you. I'd like to start today by giving you an update on the theater restorations for 2014. The, as you know, the first phase of plaster was completed this past winter. Phase two will begin the third week in August. And the HVAC design is completed for the main theater area and will be going out for bids starting next week. So, and that, the HVAC is also to be installed starting the third week in August. We have about four weeks of dark time before we begin our fall season. But the reason why we're here today is because we're very excited to announce a major fundraiser that will be starting in June, this, is it June?
This month.
This month, yeah. But we're starting the promotions in June, and it's for the last major part of theater restorations, which is the seating project. I do have a picture of the, it's a rendering, a photo rendering of what the new seating will look like. So the goal and timeline of this project is to begin promotions this month and actually start selling, quote unquote, selling the seating July 1st. So we're working with High Rock to create TV, radio, print ads, even our own commercial, very creative commercial I might add, and also receive donations of advertising and media mentions through a variety of local media outlets. The seats will go on sale July 1st, and that, the sale will conclude on September 22nd. The reason for that is that we are trying to complete this major project before our 100th anniversary, which means that we need to have the order placed through the seating company in October, and then the actual seating will be installed in our last dark period before the 100th anniversary celebration, and that dark period begins right after the I'd like the council to be aware that we have had preliminary discussions with Washington County, and we have requested to be on the agenda. I believe we're going to meet with them the 1st of July after their elections. Our targeted ask to the county will be $200,000. And the goal here is really to be able to promote to the, to the public that we do have local government support. We really want the, the public to come through and support this project 100% if possible. But we realize that that may not be feasible in such a short timeframe, so we'd like to have some level of government support, and hopefully that level becomes minimal as we see how the public is going to support the project. We're here to the city because the Maryland Theater is downtown and we're in the city, and we believe that the seating project is a major player in downtown revitalization. The seating is not just a beautification effort, it's an accessibility issue. The, our existing seating, as we've shared before, doesn't meet current standards, and the aisle lighting is lacking for safety reasons, and the floor is very much buckled and cracked. So all of these are safety and accessibility issues that will be addressed with this major project. Just make sure I didn't miss anything. The one flyer that you have in front of you that says the Maryland Theater Seating Campaign explains a little bit about what we're going to promote to the public. We're really hoping to promote this almost as if it were a show, like Bill Cosby, that's going on sale July 1st at 11:00 a.m., so people want to get on our website, buy their seat, get their name on their seat that they desire, and be the first one to do it. So in exchange, they're going to get naming recognition with a name plaque on the seat and also a golden ticket for 2015, which entitles them to one free ticket to any show of their choice in 2000, in the 2015 season. Am I missing anything? It's on the bottom.
I don't have that.
Oh, sorry. It went around.
I'm sorry, they never got around.
Sorry.
I wonder why we had so many extras here. I'm sorry.
Get that stuff away. We never get it.
That's all right. That's all right.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, you said you had requested $200,000 from the county, is that right?
That'll be the targeted ask. We haven't been able to meet with them officially and sit from without their direction. And like Jessica said, our goal is to raise as much as we can through the community, through the seating campaign, that's why we'll launch it a lot first, but that's the targeted ask. And what we hope is we're able to make up all the monies to make that order, to get the project done before the 100th anniversary.
And that's why we're working with High Rock to really, they've been so successful even with What's Next, to create a real buzz in the community and create excitement, and that's what we want this project to be, that the community takes ownership of this new seating project at the Maryland Theater and that people can walk in and then see their names on the seats. So... So, but we, in all reality, the overall project budget is 650,000. We've received a commitment from the state for 125, so that leaves a big chunk left.
Let me just ask a couple of questions, please. First, is there any potential for, you know, are you getting any vibrations about the possibility of large donation, like the people that came forward to pay for the plaster? I'm not necessarily saying people, but...
Not at this time, but we haven't launched, launched the advertising. So, we, we do hope that that happens once the announcement is made.
And Delegate Donahue is going to be able to start sponsoring bills again after the 1st, 1st of the year. 1st of the year is July 1st. It's probably important to start talking to him early on about another one.
I've already had preliminary discussions with him, and he has already made the statement that he'd be very willing to go forward and work with us again for next calendar year.
Good. But the target here is to get these things done by, you know, the middle of next, this year, for the 100th anniversary.
January would be the installation phase, so we have to order by October 1st.
So, they need their finances rounded up by September, so they can order in October. That's be roughly the timeframe, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on, are you requesting a specific amount from the city?
Do you have your helmets on?
Well, the city, the city's been generous, obviously, in the past. The theater is downtown, and obviously, we're part of that partnership of bringing the community. And if the city, you know, obviously, there's, there's a lot of budget issues going on and things, but if the city's willing to make some type of dollar commitment, we're going to do everything we can, and I think that's what the campaign is, to make sure, maybe that doesn't even happen. And that's our hope, honestly. But at the end of the day, we're not sure how much the community will raise to this project. And the goal is October, to have this, the project ordered.
I'm sorry.
So, really, the hope is, if it's, the city's able to, to make some type of thoughts to that direction, that would be...
If you actually sold all the seats here, how much does that bring?
550,000.
See, that would actually, if you actually, if you sold them all...
Absolutely.
And then, we have the 125 from the, from the state, so we would be about where we need to be.
Right, and that's why it was designed that way.
Right. Yeah, I, I think we've all expressed our commitment to the Maryland Theater, and we've put our money where our mouth is, obviously, so far. I, I would suggest, hopefully, the county will come through with something, and that we stay in communication with the Maryland Theater and see where they are in relation to their fundraising. And one of the reasons I say that, we may find that you get to a stage where the best way to do this is for the city to come out by way of example, and say, listen, we got this gap to close, and we'll start doing matching, matching if we can rate, you know, things like that. I, I think you can count on this city's support in relation to what you've seen in the past, but I don't know that you're really looking for an actual monetary commitment right now as much as you're asking for, will you guys be there when we come and say, this is what we need to wrap this campaign up? And I think you can go to the bank, if you're raising substantial amounts, and get the commitment of some substantial amount from the county, we'll be here.
I like that idea of a match. Have we thought of that before? We're up to a certain limit? I mean, I think we need time to work this out, but I, I think that incentivizes it a bit.
Sure, and that may be the type of thing, like you say, we may not have to do until near the end. That may be the kick in this fundraiser, when they're, when they're three-quarters of the way there, and they've got this much further to go, and, and we can join in and say, we would match this, and we would do that. That's what my thought is instead, because one thing I, I don't want to do is you not get commitments from the two governments that make your fundraising, like people go, well, they already got the money, they don't need it.
Well, and that's why we, we agree. That's why we're really going after the public campaign, and that's why we have brought in High Rock.
So, we're here, I think I can safely say, we're here as a city...
We're here up to a reasonable, we can't, as you guys know, but we can, we'll find ways to help, I think, like the match, I like that idea, and maybe the campaign can go forward, and then later on, we can see where things are. Because you, you know, we were the first one to step forward on the initial capital program. And it's, you know, the bond bill failed, but, so we're there, you know, our motives are there, and when you're promoting this, you can say, well, the city and county both put into our capital program already. They stand by, I don't know what's going to happen with them in July, but, you know, because it could be a de-incentive, too, if we put too much in.
Well, we, we believe the, we appreciate the board, the council here, and the city, and the, the community coming together through the city to help the Maryland Theater, and we're doing everything on our part to be responsible, really take this campaign and really promote it, and that's why we're looking for a lot of success in this for the community.
You're doing a great job. Sounds just, such a pleasure to...
Are we going to get a seat demonstration, by the way? I think we ought to be telling the public, these, as I understand it, these seats are wider, is that correct? I know, there's one there, and they're more comfortable, and they're wider.
Marty, you're the, are you the tallest?
Right, it enhances the fan experience.
Are you the tallest? Lou, get over there and set the seat, see if you fit ya.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I did, I tried it out before the meeting.
I'll take your word for it.
Well, they're definitely, how much wider, higher are they in the back, Jessica?
Uh, they're about eight inches.
Yeah, I can tell you, they're certainly, they're different.
Water, it's got a higher back.
Yeah, the water.
So, they're not just replacing the same old, same old, they're improved, it's improved, improved seating, not just that seating.
That would look good with your name on, Boo.
Yeah, I think it would.
I do, too. I do, too.
You got a check?
Yeah.
Was that a challenge, Mr. Monstrous?
Yeah, Lou.
Financial challenge.
Yeah, that's the first, the first challenge.
How many, how many chairs are there up in the balcony?
About 650.
But what is there, like, is it one complete section, or was it divided, just like the downstairs?
Three sections.
Okay, yeah, and how many's on that one row? Yeah, I think that would be interesting. I need your phone number, I don't do email.
And can I ask you a historical question about the Maryland Theater? I don't know if you know the answer, some might be putting you on the spot, but recently, there was an article in the Middletown Valley Citizen, and they have a little blast from the past section, and from 100 years ago, May 22nd, 1914, there was a little blurb about the plans for the Maryland Theater that's going to be built in Hagerstown at a cost of $125,000. And...
That's 1914 dollars.
But it said, yeah, 1914 dollars, but it said there were 2,200 seats. Has there ever been 2,200 seats? That was the plan, anyway, when that article came out.
People were much smaller, man.
Well, I was thinking, the fire would do any thing to the capacity.
It didn't ruin, it didn't touch the actual theater, it was only the four-year...
So, they must have just downsized the plans.
Yeah, and we, our, our historical documents say that the theater cost 200,000 to build, so I'd...
So, less seats and over budget, yeah.
Sounds like government.
Well, it is pretty ornate, so maybe they decided to shift money to the decor.
Well, we're excited about this project. This really, like we spoke earlier, it really leads us to our 100th anniversary. And this is a project that the board and the staff and Jessica, being the executive director, are really excited about. Yeah, I think the community's going to appreciate the comfort, the sound system that the city was part of, and all the other things. So, I really do thank the council here for the support.
And we, we'd love to work with Karen to do just an over-the-top ribbon-cutting unveiling once the seats are in.
Sure.
Sounds great.
And remember to get this information out to the delegates that represent us.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So, we can get bond calls.
You know, the hands-on when it comes to pulling money and seating.
What's the name of our prime delegate down in Baltimore City? Maybe we should need to contact her, maybe we need to get ahold of Ms. McIntosh, you know, just to help her out.
But we will go ahead and launch the campaign on, and seats will go on sale July 1st, 11:00 a.m., and maybe we'll plan to come back at the end of July and give you an update.
That would be great.
There have got to be some artistic types out there someplace that have played in that theater, that have a really soft spot in their heart for that theater. Aren't there a few people possibly that you could contact and say, look, we need some dough bad, if we're going to save this theater, make it work? And ask them to, ask them to do fundraisers? Have you thought about that?
Well, I think, not to that level of detail, but I know what we're doing is, we're now, now that we've understood what our project is, and what we need to do, and the cost, and we have all the drawings and the renderings, and an actual seat, we're trying to put together a long list of people we need to talk to and make personal asks to, and I appreciate the opinion.
Why don't you ask Bill Cosby if he'd come back on his own nickel sometime, and do a fundraiser for the Maryland Theater? I bet he would.
Thank you.
If we could, real quick, for Jessica, we've got high school graduations coming up. Through the June program schedule's pretty full and pretty nice.
Sure. Barbara Ingram graduates on this Thursday, Smithburg High School is Friday. And then, next week, we have City Ballet School performing their spring recital, as well as the Antietam Velo Bicycle Race on Friday evening, which we host the VIP area in the courtyard. And then, third week, I'm trying to think, we have a private wedding that weekend, and also, Bill Cosby, of course, for two shows. And the final week is Miss Maryland.
You know, one thing, I probably put Jessica on the spot just for a second, but I was impressed with the numbers that she shared one time. It was the days the theater's full during the daytime and during the evening, which, you know, some, you know, if you want to know what's happened to Maryland Theater, Jessica has some numbers as far as the calendar days that were busy.
We have students in the theater over 180 days per year, and we have 175 unique events or shows at the theater each year. So, with a staff of three and a board of 15, and volunteers of 50-plus besides the board, I think that's a big accomplishment.
Yeah, it is.
So, the theater's definitely a community asset that we're promoting as an asset to the community, that's why the students are in there so much. It's an important part of our future, so...
Yeah, and it's nice to see this taking to another level.
Yes.
It really is.
Thank you.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and your support always.
And I would just say, if there's anything we can do to help promote this campaign, I think we would be willing to do anything along those lines.
Thank you, I would say, open the Rolodex and get some calls.
Yeah, absolutely.
And pull some support, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is our distinguished Chief of Police, Mark Holtzman.
Good evening.
Got a couple of things on the agenda with, with your name on it.
Yes. Dress uniform tonight, because we have our award ceremony this evening.
That's right, yeah. I apologize for the schedule. I think next year, we'll have it, maybe not on a Tuesday?
Yeah, exactly. There was a...
When was it sent out? Because I just looked at it.
More than the city, unfortunately, right?
Yeah, we got, we got kind of bumped back on the HCC's schedule. They'll adjust for next year, they said, to get it back on a non-meeting night.
I'm sure everybody here would like to attend and recognize.
It's a good event, it really is.
We'll send our regards, please.
Could you make a remark that we're in session when you're in there?
I will, yeah, certainly I will.
People don't...
Thank you. Yep, certainly will. Mr. Mayor, I'm here this evening to just present to council two grant opportunities that the police department has regarding operational needs for staffing and a program need for our neighborhood policing program. The first one is the cops hiring grant, the 2014 cops hiring grant is out. They only give us 30 days to get back to them, so this, this one's due by the end of the month, which is why I got on your agenda so quick. This is the same grant that we've received police officers on the last two times. The first time, we received five police officers. The next time, we applied for two, we got two. The maximum is five. My intent is to ask permission to apply for the maximum, again, of five. Now, it's a competitive grant, it's ranked, we've received it twice in the past, there's no guarantee to receive this grant, but I did, I did put down the, the operational plan for these five officers, would be to create a, what we would normally know as a street crimes unit, this would be a direct patrol unit. They would be in uniform, and they would focus on homicide, gun violence, and gang activity around the city. You have to pick one of the program areas within the grant, they give you four program areas to focus on. Last year, we had an abnormally high amount of homicides, we had some shootings, and so, I believe it fits well with the intent of the grant, and that's what those five positions would be. The numbers are, it's a four-year grant, they pay for 75, up to 75% for three years, with a one-year retention for the city.
So, the fourth year is the one-year retention?
Fourth year would be the one-year retention. So, the way the numbers break down roughly are about $80,000 per year, and then, the last year would be, that would be the city's portion, the last year would be around 300, it's a little over $300,000, we ran the numbers twice, about $350,000 are, is going to be the cost for the fifth year, or, I'm sorry, the fourth year, because that's completely on the city. The way this would work, we would, wouldn't be able to start this until mid-year, so in fiscal year 15, it would be less than $40,000 impact to the budget, and then, we would have two years where it would be $80,000 apiece, and the last year, we would only get, we would get that, the 40,000. So, it's sort of split, and then, because it doesn't track with the, with the actual fiscal year, this would go with the calendar year for us, we just would not be ready to hire anybody on this fiscal year to fill this grant. So, fiscal year 15 impact, which is not budgeted for, would be around a little less than $40,000. Then, we would have to budget for the next two years, $80,000 a year, and then, $40,000 would go out of that last one. The, the final year would be $350,000 full impact for the city.
Ryan, what year is that?
That'd be the fourth year.
Fourth year.
Right.
So, 19...
Fiscal year 18.
15, 16, 17, 18.
18, okay.
18.
Any thoughts? Questions for the chief? Mr. Brubaker?
On the funding, the cost during the grant period will be 239,000?
Right, that's for the three, count, three, 36 months. Over 36 months, we have...
Is that for the total three years or per year? Is it per year?
It's total three years.
Total for the three years?
Yes.
That's what, but then, then after that, it's going to be 313, well, it's a 350s bracket.
Yeah, we ran the numbers again with Michelle, and came back with 355. Michelle here, we're going 355? We'll go with 355 for the fourth year.
But the 239's still a good number?
239 actually came down to 234, on her math.
It's paid for the Civil War Heritage.
Okay. So, it'd be 234, spread over 36 months. The last 12 months would be the 355, which would be in fiscal year 18, to sum that up.
Any other questions, feedback, thoughts?
So, it's, it's about 78,000 a year for the first three years, if you, that's roughly 78,000 a year.
Yes, sir. Just to let you know what I'm doing operationally at the police department, we, we continue to have issues with our downtown, and my original plan this year, if we could ever get fully staffed, would be to initiate this direct patrol unit, but we just, we're struggling to get, get the tank filled up with people. So, as this group comes out of the academy, we're going to increase our staffing downtown more than we've ever had before. So, we're going to, we're going to front-load everything on the downtown and, and just stay real strong on the downtown. My goal is that you see police officers down there every time you come through, 24/7, coverage down there, and multiple officers on days when we have these 175 events that Ms. Green was talking about. So, that's where the manpower's going to go. Instead of pulling three or four officers away from that, I want to increase that staffing on the downtown squad, so that's why the need for the grant, to go after the grant to fund the direct patrol unit, there's still a need for a direct patrol unit, but between direct patrol unit and the downtown, I'm going to go with the downtown right now.
I have no problem with what the chief is recommending, and I, I continue to say that Councilmember and I was ahead of this curve long ago, and everything we want to do about downtown, to me, all the issues we have, all the positives, all the negatives, all center around what the chief is discussing now. We can have the most beautiful library in the world, we can have the nicest restaurants in the county, we can have the best shows at the Maryland Theater, and if people are being harassed or fearful of coming down to the city, we will lose all of it. And there were times over the years where we've all spoken of perception. Unfortunately, with the lack of policing, perception is becoming a reality that we need to put an end to, and in my opinion, have to do that with exact... In my opinion, have to do that with exactly the plan the chief is proposing, and I strongly support it.
I totally agree with you, Bill. And there's hardly anybody in this community who doesn't understand that we need more cops. Simple as that. Well, I like the idea of leveraging. We get five cops for $78,000 a year, if I understand this correctly.
That's correct.
So five cops for $78,000. The only thing is, I'm going to have to add that on the plus column of that balance sheet that I started the other day, and we'll have to work hard to find it. But I think the leverage argues that it's a, it's a financial thing. There will be another council frankly worrying about that last, there's one year that we must do, a one-year retention requirement, right?
Yes.
So that 355 pops up in 18, and then it blends into the rest of the, well, blends into the budget at that point, actually, as to how to do that. So, you know, right now, I'm focused on 16, FY '16, how to get there. But I think we get a lot for the bang for the buck here. I think it's a good value.
Can we just?
And these are all street officers, right?
Yes, all being uniform.
Just get them and move everybody right out of Hagerstown that doesn't belong here. Okay, as we're, as we're focusing here, okay, then the community has got to focus on what we have then around us. And that means that we still have only patrolling out there. So the, the community has got to be driven, as in the one community now is either going to be a crime watch or Neighborhoods First. And you see it now, just like we do at ours. When you see something, you call the person, you report it, and you let everybody know. And this is what we're going to have to do. I mean, the focus is going to be downtown, but you're going to move them from here, and they're going to spread out. So, and they're already doing that.
Well, to a point, it's.
But it's fine. But this is where the, the community really.
But this is the United States. You can't just.
No, but I, I think in that respect, a, a number of the issues we have downtown are people who are downtown and staying downtown or not. We have the crime that certainly is going out into the neighborhoods.
Yeah, it is.
I, I think a lot of the criminal activities that we're talking about are the harassment activity, the type of thing that a police presence just prevents.
Disorderly conduct.
You got it. You got it. Panhandling.
Absolutely.
People, people observing, people that scare them and not seeing anybody that wears a uniform around that may be able to alleviate their fears.
Unfortunately, Mark, you really need more than them. You need more than the five.
Because frankly, with additional police officers, if there's something out in the south end or the east end or something that comes up, you've got more people you can throw at it if necessary.
Right. This group, this group can move beyond the downtown. We'll, we'll have the downtown staff by the time we start.
But I want to make, I want to make one point that we keep forgetting. The chief presents statistics every year, and most years I've seen them, we have the same violent crime rate as Annapolis or Frederick.
Absolutely.
Two destination cities. We're right in the same order of magnitude per capita as those two major destination cities. It's the small stuff that, it's not small. It's not small when it happens to you, but it's the level underneath that that's hard to deal with.
Right, exactly.
Just what we're talking about. But we can't forget that our violent crime level is no different than other cities, major cities in Maryland, including cities that people go to for recreation and destination.
And in some cases, a lot better.
Well, right. And better in some, in some of the categories. That's correct.
And this helps address that fear of crime. I've talked to the council about the fear of crime. It's the perception. It's, it's, and it really, exactly what you said. This is about crime prevention and putting, putting police officers on the street. To them, sometimes it can be a little boring because, you know, they're not, they're in it for the action sometimes. But, but other times, they know that they're, they're preventing crime. And, and once you work down here, once you walk down here and, and you get to know the people that work here and go to school here and live here, there are a lot of decent people here. And we're talking about addressing the, the whooping and the hollering, the, you know, the, everything the council's been talking about for the last couple of weeks at, at meetings. We do have actual crime takes place. There's no doubt. We've had a good run of it downtown. We've had some, some things that pop up that quite frankly just irritate me a lot. And we're doing what we can. Our, our officers, our detectives, it amazes me how fast detectives can get leads. I believe I'll have some positive information on a couple of things that popped up over the last week. We have names we're running with, and they're doing a great job at putting the cases down and responding to the calls. This just puts a few more people out there to deal with that perception, deal with that comfort zone and those behavior-type issues. It's just.
Just please don't use the word perception, because that usually comes back to bite you, okay? I just, you know, use another word, because we may not be seeing violent crimes, but we certainly are being impacted.
Arguing that. I said it's.
Yeah, I know, Marty, and that's what I said.
But some people translate that into.
No.
You'll get mugged. You'll get all these horrible things. And our rate is very good, is comparable to other destination cities.
But the bottom line is.
Doesn't make you feel warm and fuzzy.
Always gets their man.
We're a bottom line. I guess locally, statewide, and nationally, would be drones.
Drones?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, no.
We're not buying a drone.
You say you're not buying a drone. Let me tell you something. For $750, you can have a drone that will cover this whole city with high-definition camera that can be operated by somebody. When you say you're not buying a drone, have a drone this big with a high-definition camera mounted right on it, that, you know, I see a helicopter in the north end of town when I could see a drone there in 35 seconds. So I'm not laughing when I say that, and I'm sure in law enforcement, you guys have seen these. And I'm sure there's also FAA issues and other things. I'm just curious, and, and I don't expect to see drones flying over Hagerstown next week, but I am curious. I'm sure that, that in the police business, you guys have seen what they can do and how inexpensive in reality they are, under $1,000. Talking about under $1,000. Talking about almost silent. You're talking about being able to fly at 1,000 feet up, be totally controlled by, and sit there and watch a camera. I mean, so when you talk about helicopters that are out looking for people at 2:00 AM in the morning who are running, that takes 15 minutes to get the copter there when you can literally have a drone there in 35 seconds, it's an interesting concept when we talk about manpower. That's all.
I think, you know, the law enforcement community is certainly looking at it. You're right, there are restrictions from FAA. The, the government, you know, we, we want, part of that group, we're not allowed to fly those. We have to have special exemptions. And there are a few departments around the country that do have some exemptions to do some testing on that from the FAA. We, of course, don't. We have not applied for it. It probably something we'll see in the future at some point. I don't know if we'll ever see it at local law enforcement level, but you're right, the costs do keep coming down. Where you may start to see some of that first would, might be over top of a fire incident, like a woodland fire, looking for hot spots so you don't endanger helicopter pilot. They can, they can look for hot spots and, or maybe a tactical incident, a SWAT-type incident, where you're trying to get some coverage, some video coverage. But I think, and when I think drones, you think of the, the wars that we're fighting and, and the bombing and that sort of thing. And they're effective in that arena. I almost don't like using the word drone when you think about civilian.
Yeah, because what we're talking about is literally.
Aerial video platform, yeah.
A thing, a platform that's this big. So we have no misunderstanding.
I think the concern we have there is with, you know, when it comes down, when it runs out of gas, where's it going to go?
An ACLU.
There, there is one other grant. I know Bruce wanted me to cover the staffing numbers.
Because we haven't heard from Mr. Alshauer, so I want to know if you have any thoughts or comments or feedback.
This would increase our numbers to 112. We're, we're staffed at 107 now, authorized for 107. We're not staffed there yet. We do have nine in the police academy set to graduate June 20th, and we have another seven vacancies we're trying to fill for the academy that starts in July. And so this would put our authorized strength at 112 if we were able to get the grant.
Fully funded if we get the grant, not, not filled positions.
Right, fully funded.
But I think that might be the highest number, at least that I'm aware of, in terms of sworn officers, at least in recent history. I'll say it that way.
I believe you're correct. I was looking back over, over the last few decades, and I think the highest I got was 109, maybe 110. So I can fact-check that for you, but it would be.
So just so, if the council's asked, this would take us to 112 sworn officers in the department?
Yes.
If we get all five approved.
Yes.
And then you have another program, is that right?
The other grant is just, it's a quick one. It is a, on the, on page two. It's called a micro grant. This is a new one. We have not applied for this one in the past. And you can only apply up to $100,000. And our intent here, this is a one-time grant. There's no, no retention cost with it. It's, it's to support neighborhood policing programs. We, we just initiated our, our form of neighborhood policing program. So what the, what we intend to apply for here is an evaluation component to have probably University of Maryland again study our neighborhood policing program, see what its effectiveness is. And then a program coordinator. That could be either a sworn or civilian. Most likely would be a civilian. And depending on the level of funding we get, it may just be a part-time position, not a full-time position. But there's no retention cost with this. If the grant goes away, the position would go away along with it. So it's just to apply for a micro grant and a, for neighborhood policing and a micro grant coordinator for that for a one-year, for whatever dollar amount we may receive, up to $100,000. So that's the second one. Any questions on that one?
So this would be a conditional hire, or wouldn't be the employee with rights to, wouldn't be a regular staff employee with rights on departure?
No, I think, I think it would be.
Contract, well.
Oh, for one year.
For one year.
For one year.
They would not be guaranteed their position beyond that.
Well, I always call that a conditional temporary or something like that.
I know, I know it's not a contract position.
Category than a full-time position.
She's here, but I, I think the point is that we'd have grant funding for the position for one year. There's no commitment to keep the position on city funding after expiration.
Right, but it's hired on, on that basis. I mean. Conditional.
Time out. Before our guests leave, are you guys from Troop 65?
We are.
I just want to recognize you and thank you for being here. Appreciate you taking the time out to observe local government. Thanks for being here. Sorry about that.
My neighbors. Is this, is this the guy, the lady, whatever, who goes out and tries to keep warring neighbors apart from each other?
Well, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be tasked with mediation plans like I think what you're talking about. This one would be more of a coordinator when we're having problems in a particular neighborhood. It would be that, that person that would help return those phone calls and coordinate the officer activity that would take place in that neighborhood to address that certain crime. And he would work with the officers that are assigned to each one of the neighborhoods. So it would be somebody to collect up when we say, hey, call the police because we need to know what's going on in your neighborhood. This is the person they would call. And then they would take that information and hand it down to the officer to make sure it got done and follow back up with the, with the resident that called to let them know what we did or didn't, weren't able to do for them. So that's what that would be.
Well, I'm, I'm aware that from constituent complaints that there are, there are neighbors who sort of have declared war on one another and that you all happen to become involved occasionally, and thank you very much.
Yeah, we do. We.
It helps, it helps the situation greatly. Thank you very much.
Well, I would also refer your neighbors to the mediation center.
Oh, they don't want to mediate, believe me.
The thing is, you got to come to the table. That's, that's the whole point.
It doesn't look like it.
Got to be willing to come to the table.
Are you okay with this one-year grant coordinator?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, right on time, I may add, is the discussion on agency contributions. This is a, it's been requested for discussion multiple times. It seems like as soon as we figure out one thing, then we get requests for more. So this is perhaps an appropriate time to have this conversation. I think it noted in the memo that even though we've approved the budget, disbursements don't start until the first week of July, but disbursements do start the first week of July. So I think, you know, we're looking for some clarity. If council members have any proposals for changing amounts or withdrawing support, this would be the time to have that conversation.
Correct.
Ms. Hepburn, do you want to say something? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I know at the time that we meet, we did the motion for the budget. It was mentioned that before any funds would be distributed, we would come back. And I know we're probably all hoping for like a, a week or two break from this before we came back. But then when I started to, when I started to look at this, I was like, ooh, we have a number of these agencies who actually get their funding or a portion of their funding on July 1st. So with the June calendar being what it is and all the other things and topics on the agendas back this evening.
So how do we want to do this? Do we want to go item by item and do a thumbs up, thumbs down, have a discussion? And let me just say, because part of the packet is, are minutes from August 20, 2013. And I just want to say that criteria for consideration in the budget for agency funding includes the significant value to city functions. So as we talk about this, these are things that we can think about. Significant value to city functions, a reasonable contribution to the social makeup of Hagerstown, and the ability to enlist financial support from other sources. They are all required to submit budget and financial reports and a copy of their most recent audit. I guess my first question is, do they all do that last part? I mean, I know I get regular things from the Museum of Fine Arts, because I'm an ex-officio member of their Board of Trustees. So I get that information. I'm not so certain about any of the other ones.
We don't always get annual budgets or annual audit reports, because some of these agencies are so small that they only have audits maybe every two years. But what they do is, they do send in a packet. They do send in the information. They do send in their most recent financials and their most recent budget. They typically, we typically, just as, as a part of the review, you did mention a criteria. We do send the memo out in November, and we say, you know, we're getting ready to start our budget process. This is where we are. Here's the deadline. We need everything back by January. And everybody's been very receptive. Everybody typically gets everything back one time. If there's a problem or there's been a transition or somebody's been out, they either email or give me a phone call.
So do we in fact have not all of the statements, but budgets for each one of these groups?
In whatever fashion or form that they have, yes.
Because I personally, I would be interested in seeing them myself. And, you know, I've made it clear, and, and I think probably we can make clear that there are some groups that are not an issue here. I don't think any of us have an issue with the Hagerstown Municipal Band. That may be one way to do it, is say what we think we're collectively, and personally, I think we have a quasi-contractual and totally moral obligation for the library. I mean, excuse me, for the museum. I think the city, at the beginning of this museum, made a commitment when it was formed. And I think we generally felt that we have a commitment to the library. So when I look at those three things, I, I would say that I would not need to see their finances.
Is the library just for what? Is that, what was that for, the library? Because we were also asked for additional funds.
And this $31,500 is just our.
The overall that we had already set. Okay.
Not additional.
Okay.
This, yes. This, this schedule, we kept it at the bare bones. The only thing that was added in here was the monies that we did commit to the Maryland Theater. That's the extra $200,000. So it is important to note, when you look at the Maryland Theater, typically our normal contribution to them is $9,000. When you look at fiscal year 13, it looks slightly higher, but keep in mind, that was the actual sound system. They came in and they did a separate presentation, and we had approved that throughout the year. But other than that, they've only been receiving $9,000.
And I would certainly include the Maryland Theater, given the fact we already committed to that. I think that's clear.
Just for clarification to the people who are watching us on TV.
Sure.
The, all these, all these organizations are included within this budget, and they're funded within this budget, right? Which is a balanced, which is a balanced budget, right?
For fiscal year 15, that's correct.
That's, okay. I just want to make sure that everybody out there watching us understands that.
And there is a schedule within the budget book. It's found in section three. It's on page 54. I think we had mentioned that in one or two of our budget meetings. And I know in the past, we've spent some, some time on this as well.
You know, I think maybe we just ticked down the lists. We've already said the art museum, we're not going to.
We're going to talk about the criteria you read. I mean, I mean, I could go through here and say, there's certain ones that I think are core, course, there's civic responsible core services.
there's civic responsible core services. And the others are nice to do, but I don't know what other, you know, I don't, I'm really reluctant because we've approved these. Are we going down one by one? I think we could say $75,000 that way, by my standards. But I hate to cut things off that we didn't give notice we were going to do during the budget processes.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that we necessarily cut that this fiscal year, but certainly as staff continues to, you know, I'm sure they're already starting next year's budget. So I think, and this is a discussion that's been.
What I'll do is say, I think this, whichever one I think is a core service, it doesn't mean right now that I'm willing to cut the others.
Right.
Okay.
So we're going to, so what we're saying is we're going to identify which ones we think are core services or ones that we think are questionable. And then we can always follow up with the organizations that we think are questionable and have them come justify their city contribution or value to city functions. I mean, that would be one way to approach it as well. So the art museum is good. The Board of Education Celebration of Excellence, $200.
I don't have a problem with $200 contribution.
But it's not a core.
No, it isn't.
I'll make enemies here, but it's, I don't call it core.
I agree with that.
Art museum, I think is core.
We can agree that the Board of Education Celebration of Excellence is not core, but I don't hear anyone suggesting that we cut it at this point. CASA is $27,000.
I would like to know a lot about CASA.
I don't think it's a core, like this civic.
I don't think it's a core either.
And I really would like to see the monies that's going in there.
I would too. I'm not at all convinced that this is something city. And the other thing, when we were saying that this is part of a balanced budget, these are not CDBG contributions. These are city taxpayer dollars. And I would like to see their budget, what the money is used for. And on a lot of these things, I certainly would be interested to know who is being serviced vis-à-vis, is the city subsidizing county services, which we certainly are. And I would also like to know what the county is contributing.
So the comparison of contributions for city versus county, is that what you're And I just want to note that the total contributions, the number of $473,490 that's proposed for next year is effectively over two cents on the tax rate.
And it's skewed with the $209,000.
But that's skewed because.
True, true.
The $209,000.
It's a penny.
But typical is at least a penny, a penny and a half.
Right, very good, penny, penny and a half.
Character counts program.
Certainly not a core program.
Not core.
It's not core, but we enter into character counts.
I think it adds significant value to city function.
I'm not arguing that point.
Yeah. And by the way, where are we at with that? Because we're supposed to be seeing character counts as far as in stores and all of this. Remember when all of this was supposed to?
We can schedule an update on.
I just would like to know, yeah, what we're doing.
Sure.
Can I make a suggestion too? Can I suggest it? As much as it's interesting to have a discussion, if we don't even discuss three-figure items, items that are under $1,000. I think we should just avoid even discussing them. If it's under $1,000 and it's in the funding, let's go ahead and do that.
Not bother with it. So let's go, the next biggest item is the free libraries. Everyone, obviously that's a.
I'm okay with library funding.
Adds value to the city and makes a reasonable contribution to this makeup.
And I would note that the library as well as the museum, every single year justifies the contribution that this city makes. It's not the lunch they feed us, it's the statistics and the information they provide to us. And a lot of these organizations don't do that. It's just, hand us the money and we get no feedback at all for what it does for our citizens or our community. And that's not true of those two organizations.
I'm not sure what order we're going in, Mr. Americas. I have community rescue ahead of that.
Well, you jump down, you jump down to the bottom.
I'm trying to get the easier ones out of the way first, Marty. That's all, the only thing I'm doing, what I think are the easiest ones.
You're setting a mayor's priority, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and there's no rhyme or reason, but we can do community rescue service next. That's $45,000.
I think that's the one that's justified. That's a core.
Oh, it's big time justified.
Okay. Any other discussion there?
Yeah, I think the hospital didn't figure out what its plan was because we still have a lot of the ones that aren't taken care of that we're taking care of.
We have HMDP at $50,000. We had them in here a few weeks ago to give us a presentation. I think I made my position pretty clear that I don't think they're a very effective organization. They have mission creep, but they do add some value, especially the home store has value in the community.
And that's what we're paying for.
This is just the home store, right?
This is just, this is the home store, right here, that amount.
$50,000 is the home store.
I guess I'd like to find an alternate funding source. I don't know what that is, the real small community or.
You know what, and I still, and I don't know, but I know, John, when you, I think you came forward and had said that there was monies not taken out of CDBG when it came to HMDP, but there was monies before that came out for home store back. Because I know CDBG money was used at that time when there was the home store, if my memory is correct.
The HMDP receives about $24,000 a year in CDBG funds for their down payment assistance program. But housing counseling falls within the regular administration and there's no capacity to give additional funds to, or CDBG funds to HMDP for housing counseling.
I need clarification on CDBG funds, okay, as to, in looking at this. Because I think also they offer the fair housing. Now, where does that come out of? Because we don't give towards fair housing there, correct?
Towards their fair housing programs.
I mean, do you have fair housing here at the city as well? And I know I'm off topic here, but I need to, you know, I just need to talk to you, okay? I need to talk to you about CDBG money. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. So it sounds like there's consensus that we're leaving $50,000 in for HMDP. We're not going to touch that.
Yes.
The band, I think we already talked, said was a core service, $18,000. Discovery Station, $14,400.
I'm not interested in cutting that. That organization brings a lot of visitors to downtown Hagerstown. And they spend their money down here.
And I believe they enlist financial support from other sources, reasonable contribution.
I would say it's in the same leg as the museum and the libraries.
Right.
Would the same be said for the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, $17,550?
I'm curious what county support is.
For which one?
For which one?
Symphony Orchestra.
Well, I'm interested to seeing what they are doing with the, yeah, Discovery Station, if anything.
The county also.
The county, yes.
So we could, they probably have a sheet in their budget similar to ours in terms of agency contributions and maybe.
Because certainly they have to be pulling from some other entities because the rent is significant.
Correct. So we're good with the Symphony Orchestra? Contemporary School for the Arts is $4,050. I was just notified yesterday that the occupant there is being evicted, so I'm not certain what the status of that organization is at this point. What are your thoughts?
I don't think it's core, but I think certainly if there's no place for him to do business, he doesn't need that grant. I mean, that was the purpose, right? That he could be in downtown Hagerstown.
My knowledge, my experience, I believe that grant was totally related to the, what he did in the park. Is that what it was, related to some? I would see.
I guess the question is, is that activity continuing?
Well, I think we need to get financials.
They are.
I would like.
So that'll be one we follow up on? That might just pay for our $5,000 CVB contribution.
Find out what the monies to be used for in the financials of that order.
$3,000 for the food bank.
I don't think it's core. I mean, we could argue.
I just want to see who all the other contributors are to the food bank. There really is significant when it comes to that. And I know that we're hearing numbers. I know that we're hearing middle class. I need to know where all of this food, because every time you turn around, there's a pantry here, a pantry there, a pantry, so I want to know.
I don't, I'm not saying any of these aren't worthy.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, is that I still want to see.
And I also think, you know, what I brought up earlier, and I'm interested in it, I'm, there's a, there's a theory that I'm not so sure that I understand in our county. And it seems to be that there are two funding sources for everything. Washington County and the city of Hagerstown, period. It's like there are no other municipalities in this community at all, none. It's either the city of Hagerstown or Washington County. And generally, people are looking for the citizens of the city who are the poorest in the entire county, who are already paying county taxes, to be the ones who through their taxpayer monies make these contributions. Now, there are certain agencies here that are strictly in the city that are clear, and we clearly identified them. But, yeah, if I see that, for instance, we're the only municipality supporting CASA, we're the only municipality supporting the food bank, we're the only municipality supporting the Maryland Symphony Theater, I have to start wondering, we're the only community supporting Holly Place? I have to wonder what message are we sending while we, at the same time, wring our hands about tax increases and the fact that we are poverty-stricken in our community? I have some issues now that I haven't had in the past. But we're the ones who seem to be facing this huge financial crisis, and I think we got to recognize it. And while a lot of these things aren't big-ticket items and they're not going to reduce things substantially, I think between now and next year at this time, I know, we already had it tonight, you know, we passed the budget a week ago and a week after we passed the budget, we get a contribution request that was not even looked at in our budget. We're going to get quite a lot more of them, like the Maryland Theater's $50,000. And my only recommendation is, in a lot of this stuff, we take a look at it and we say, you know what? That's money that when somebody comes to us with a really worthy program, we're going to want to be able to fund. And I am not willing to fund some of these programs if we find that they aren't core. Some of them may very well be detrimental to the city. We've talked about the funding of CAC while at the same time seeing them putting people down in the Dagmar that we don't want. And I think we've got to send the messages. I say to Holly Place, who we have funded forever, which is about as fine of an organization that exists, I would look at them and I'd tell them what I would say, what I try to say every year. I will never, as far as long as I'm on this council, kick any present resident out. But they've got to start understanding that I'm not willing to continue to have the citizens of Hagerstown fund a program that they aren't responsible for as they keep filling beds when they become vacated. They either need to find a funding source outside of the city of Hagerstown or they need to stop filling beds that they can't afford. Again, I reiterate, I'm not about to cut their funding that would involve having people be removed from that fantastic place. But those are the things, is crunch time comes in the city and the money issue, we don't necessarily have $400,000 every year to give out.
I think that's the biggest challenge with this whole conversation is that, you know, you look at the lump sum, you say, oh my God, you know, that's so much money. But then when we start getting down into the details, it's very difficult as individual council members to say, yes, let's cut that. Because there are constituencies and interests who are particularly involved in those things.
I bet you $50,000 could be cut pretty quickly by this council without a lot of problems.
Well, yes, the ones we said weren't core, or I thought I heard, or the ones I would define and I thought I heard, it was about $46,000 by my quick math. And then if we took the homes, found a way to do an alternate for the home store, we'd be almost at $100,000. But I don't know if we have a consensus and, a lot of these are goodwill and, you know, but you can make a lump of that amount if you chose to.
Can I, and point of clarification.
Sure.
CAC we don't fund. We haven't been funding. I know, but you keep throwing that out.
Well, we.
We have not funded CAC in a long time, Lou.
But the point remains, we need them to be better partners and find out who is funding the CAC if they're going to keep contributing to problems and barriers to our downtown revitalization.
But what I'm saying is, is that we have not been contributing to CAC for years. The only money that ever goes into that program is the camps in the summertime.
It's ongoing federal money, isn't it?
And the Holly Place, is the city fund Holly Place?
Yes.
Yes.
That's not in this.
It's in another.
That's CDBG funding.
Which is, which is fine. Again, I.
Which, again, CDBG did have a lot of other organizations a long time ago that was totally, I mean, CDBG funding is like.
Well, that's dried up too.
Really? Well, again, I want to just know how CDBG works, okay?
And you're going to follow up with John on that, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. There's only a couple other over $1,000 items. One of them is the University of Maryland.
Schedule a few hours.
No, it's okay.
CDBG.
One of them is the USMH Scholarship, $4,050. They certainly have other financial sources for that scholarship fund. That's what they do, that Feast and Frolic and.
Yes, they do a lot of fundraising.
They have a fundraiser for that. Any other thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I have this thought. We're, we're really asking the University of Maryland to have a greater presence in Hagerstown. We want them to expand. We want new course offerings. We want them to be better neighbors, and they've been great neighbors, and partners in this community. And here we are, talking about getting rid of, getting rid of a program, a scholarship program that probably helps kids from Hagerstown mostly since they tend to be the poorest in the county.
The only thing that I can see as expansion is that I believe that the city of Hagerstown is going to pick up a building that's going to be handed over to the University of Maryland. Now, that's what I have to put food for thought in my mind. And look, I'd be the first one to say, gee, I don't mind helping any student, okay? I know, you know, as a matter of fact, when my daughter was going to Hood College, it was a matter of looking to see wherever you could get it from. But I think that we do give the University of Maryland and we try to help as much as we can. I would just like to see if there is any more that what is coming in. Again, we don't have a list, you know, because we've never asked for a list before.
When I think in terms.
That's the thing, when we're coming down to the nitty-gritty now, I think, okay, you know what? Yeah, we need to see. We just need to see exactly what else is out there.
I would say, just in terms of.
With regard to that particular issue, particular issue, the person who heads that is Gema Govern, she's a volunteer. She's been raising money for the University of Maryland. Ever since it's been in Hagerstown.
Yeah, because she came in here.
For scholarships.
Yeah, she came in here.
And maybe it's appropriate to, and I'm, apparently I'm now on the committee for the scholarship awards, since I'm also.
Yes, you are.
An ex-officio on the Board of Advisors for the University of Maryland, Hagerstown. I think though, you know, perhaps we designate this particular money to a student who lives in the city of Hagerstown.
This money does not go to anybody but the citizen of Hagerstown. May I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
There are two things I would suggest. I would suggest, we have two tiers here. Tier one, which I would identify as an example being CASA, being organizations, donations that we look at very quickly within the next two weeks to make a decision on whether we want to fund this year. And there are very few of those in here. We've mentioned a couple, Contemporary School, CASA, okay? We take a look at those to decide whether we're going to fund them this year. The other ones, the other ones that are budgeted, as Council Member Munson says and is identified that are looking for this money coming up right now, we say, okay, we're going to fund them. But for the first time, we're going to ask. But for the first time, we're going to ask staff to make sure that sometime within the next six months, we receive the appropriate financials and donations of organizations that are seeking funding from us, including, at minimum, the ones that are on here, other than the ones that are given to us. See, our museum clearly gives it to us. The museum clearly gives us a detailed financials. We get them, and we start discussing this around September. So that we're not, these, these are not the type of budget items that have to be discussed in May or April, because it's the last-minute thing. And these aren't things that should be discussed then, because by the time we get to our budget, these people just assume that they're getting the money because they've always gotten it. And so you tell them, in, in June, we've decided not to fund you, you put them in a, in a bad place. Whereas if we gave such notifications in September that their funding was potentially at issue, at stake, and they're going to have to justify it, I, I think we could all feel a lot better about supporting them or not supporting them.
Lou, I think you've hit upon a really good idea. To sit here tonight, this late into the process, and pour the rug out from under these people, it's not good government, I don't think.
I don't disagree with you.
But to look at, to look at this as a future issue, in, in the way you have described it, I think that makes really good sense.
I would just note that we basically had the same discussion in August of 2013, and we said there was really no sense of urgency then, and I, I fear that we're just going to keep coming back, have the same conversation, and there's not going to be enough will to say, yes, let's cut that organization.
Well, I'm willing to start cutting things next week. That's why I said, there's, there's a couple organizations we've identified here that are over $30,000, between $30,000 and $50,000, that if I saw things, I may be willing to discuss this year. In the same respect, if I didn't see, if I saw things financially that made me think that we have an obligation where we're at to continue to support this year and put it off, that would be fine. But I, I really want to see where some of this money goes, and where the other support goes, comes from.
Michelle.
I think, Mayor, I think that's the difference from the past. He's made a suggestion which includes looking at a couple of these initially, soon, and dealing with that.
Well, basically, what we're asking for is, before we give a check, we want to get verification
Which we've never done before.
We've never done it before. Do you know, and you probably don't unless you, who is it specifically that their budget is the same as what ours is? Do you know? I mean, like, what, what is, what are the, any of these that have to have the assurance by the end of what? When do they have to know, for July 1st?
Probably all of the agencies, I would imagine.
No, no, when? June what? You understand what I'm saying? Time frame. They have to know by...
And, and most of these agencies, unlike, unlike us, are what, probably in our charter, require to pass a balanced budget.
Correct.
So when their budgets are passed, I, I would be hard-pressed to say, but we would need, typically, I would have sent memos out the very next day after our budget adoption, which I haven't done.
Okay.
Just letting people know, hey, it was passed, the funding is included. You will be receiving your annual...
Dispersed, yes.
Correct. Just to give them a heads-up in case they weren't aware. And, other than that, none of these agencies have reached out in lieu of the comments that were made.
So what I'm gathering is that we really need a more systematic process for reviewing these agency contributions on an annual basis.
You, you put your finger.
We, we need financials.
Objectively evaluate whether or not they're, they're living up to these functions. Mr. Alster?
I'd say I, I recall vaguely saying something like that before.
Well, you know, Kristin, all I can say to you is, you say it 10 times, maybe 11 times, somebody will listen.
Yeah, Kristin, they won't listen to me. But it's coming around.
So for, for now, for the, what I heard was, in the next couple of weeks, we'll look at several of the organizations here that we discuss getting...
So I heard two. CASA and Contemporary School of Arts. And then does that mean that I can send out memos to everybody else on this list?
No.
Let them know?
For 15.
For 15.
We also, I also heard that we want to get an update on character counts, just an update on the program in general.
Update, but I, I think those are the two we, we look at seriously right now.
CASA and Contemporary School?
Yeah.
Is everybody in agreement?
Marty, were there other ones that you, because you said you had some other...
No, I, I just told you what, a group that added up to that we didn't find, but I'm not going to get in.
No, it's...
But I don't think we're getting into that, and I'm not going to
Right, I understand where you're coming from. That's $31,000.
I'll be glad to listen to the detail on the other two. I wasn't one of the ones that brought this back up, so, you know.
But I think you had said you identified a specific monetary amount.
I said if I did, if, if you wanted to do, and were disciplined about core versus non-core, you know, it would save 46,000 to 50,000, and my evaluation of what those are, and if you added the, the home store, it would be $100,000.
Gotcha.
But I'm not going to get into it, because I don't think we're there, and, and I don't want to be the one doing it.
No, I'd say...
But I might, you know, add it as I go through for next year, say, this is what we got to do, because we don't have the money.
So for...
But I don't think it's right to, to do it now.
I agree.
But that's my other problem, you know.
But what I did hear is that in the next couple of weeks, we want more information about these two particular organizations.
Those two particular ones I do. I don't know how many other ones do, but I do.
Right, we all do.
And as before, any funding for fiscal year 15 goes. For those two.
For those two.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm going to fund everybody else as...
I'm okay with everything else myself.
Yes, Marty? Okay.
So schedule that for the 17th or the 24th of June, right?
24th.
24th, too, is that?
CASA and Contemporary.
And Contemporary. Is unspecified agency contributions, is that just a random, if somebody comes in?
Yeah.
Just like a contingency to get a request.
You just have a contingency fund of $1,500?
And it was a little higher last year, and that's how we funded the Maryland
Yeah.
Food Bank.
And then we'll be back in September with a structure, correct? Is that the consensus at this point?
Yeah, some kind of systematic approach to reviewing these requests.
Well, and I think the systematic approach, seriously, because we've talked about these quote systematic approaches, and, well, we took care of it with CDBG. We, we created a committee, and, and we let them do that. Here, I think a systematic approach, at least in the beginning, means we need financials, financial statement, not, you know, that it's been audited, but financial budgets from every organization
Yeah, see where their revenues and where their expenses go.
so we know what's going on, where they're getting their money from, and where it's being expended on. And I think specifically in those requests, we want to know what percentage of services that we're funding are for citizens of Hagerstown versus outside of the city.
Right.
I think that's a very legitimate question.
Right, and it's also perfectly legitimate to ask them to address what they think the significant value to city functions are, their reasonable contribution to the social makeup, in addition to what you're talking about with
Yeah, I mean, we haven't asked anybody to justify the money they want.
Correct.
I mean, if you take a look, for instance, at the one we keep picking at, but I'm assuming if over the last 20 years, we continued at 27,000, you know, we funded them over half a million dollars, and we never had them even come in and tell us what we're giving the money for.
Okay, well, we'll be back
Gotcha.
on the 24th with those two. We'll free up the funding for FY15 for the others.
Good job.
Come back in September.
And Mayor, when you're putting on, this has nothing to do with this, when you're putting on your notes for the county, I would like to know exactly where does our county taxes go? I'd like to know what they do with our county taxes.
I would assume it's not in any special funds.
All I keep hearing from other people is schools. That's what it all goes to, but not specifically from them. I'd like to know.
Well, I think...
Exactly what are we getting? Exactly what are we getting for the dollars? Okay?
It's double taxation, Penny.
No, I don't want to hear that. I want to know what we're getting. Okay?
10/4.
Well, it's, it's, we're looking at it with a backwards angle.
That's all right.
Well, let's move on to the next item on the agenda.
Well, you're right. It's just a different way of looking.
Yes.
Mayor and council, iPad purchases.
Way overdue.
You know what I need to know?
So the idea here is that everything is being automated on the Agenda Management System. Of course, anyone can go on the city's website and see the agenda, and, and also get packet material that has everything that's in our, our meeting packets. Thoughts on, on this initiative?
Yeah. I think in the last two months, we've been asked by various entities for a number of Public Information Act requests, and, you know, personal information. And I think that in this day and age of technology, those aren't letters kept in hard copy in some filing cabinet. They're often kept on electronic devices, none of which I want to keep on my personal electronic devices.
I guess my question is, or my issue is, I don't want two iPads. I have an iPad already. I can access my Outlook email here from the city of Hagerstown, but my, my thinking is that if I send an email on my iPad, it's not, doesn't mean everything on my iPad is now, you know, open to public scrutiny. The, the bottom line is, if I send an email from my iPad, that's on the network server that is the same email, whether I send it on my iPad, it will show up and send email on my computer. So I guess, I don't understand...
What if you send it, what if you send the message, but the message is altered? In other words, let's say you're typing. You type this message in, in a Word document, okay, on, on, on your, your personal electronic device. And before you paste that, if you will, information into the electronic format in which you plan to send, there are alterations made. And an intelligent attorney says, hey, I don't want the email, I want the original data that was created. The, 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 you know, the circulars that I've read said that public information includes that type of data collection.
Are you talking about like a draft or?
Right, like the metadata and things like that, which, which are altered in the format of an email as it is created.
Could it depend on how it's requested?
I, that's what I'm saying. You know, that you have, you have intelligent attorneys out there all the time that, that I think are, are certainly knowledgeable in how to request electronic-formatted data information requests these days that aren't a simple, you know, if...
We need everything.
Right, if, if, a prime example is Danny and I. Danny and I have texted each other back and forth over meeting, you know, times and timeframes, and, you know...
But that doesn't have anything to do with the conduct of public business. I mean, that's really the only legitimate reason to have a public information act request.
But I'm, I'm conducting a communication with a city employee...
But it doesn't have to do with
On...
the conduct of city business.
City-related business.
Setting up a meeting time, though, isn't, isn't related to public business, I would argue. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not, I don't know.
Well, I'll give you an example. Let's say an attorney says, hey, I want to see who all participated in a text-related conversation, either individual or collectively, in establishing a timeframe for a specific meeting in which there may have been three, more than three individuals, having those types of individual or collective conversations, in which less than three of those individuals ended up attending the meeting. And tells an attorney is going to say, hey, I want all of that information from all of those parties on each one of those formats. And you're going to say, here's my personal electronic device with that text-related data, and, 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 now it's open to that, that opportunity for review.
Kristin, you had a...
I mean, I had to go back and find two emails back in December. You know, I, I got a folder that said, here's the emails on this subject. I looked through it and say, well, that was only four of the six emails that I'm even aware of. I had to go back and find two of those emails and say, hey, staff, here's two additional emails. I mean, we're, you're just at a level of data management, even in the, the folder this evening, it says very clearly that the format in which this 2012 electronic rollout allows, provides for us as members, just as it would staff or anybody else, to, to receive that, take notes. Now you're sitting here, and you're taking notes in some electronic format. I'm certainly not going to hand over my personal iPad to someone and say, here's all this documentation I have on my personal iPad.
I don't think it would require you to turn over the whole device. I mean, there's ways to print out information.
There, there certainly is. I think that there, there is greater scrutiny when you are being requested to say, I want to see the folders that are created on the electronic device as it is associated.
You had similar issues in Frederick County, what, last year or two years ago?
There are few local jurisdiction, local government entities that, that I know of at this point, especially of this size, that operate without some type of publicly distributed, you know, communication format. You know, whether it's, you know, Washington County with, with the more archaic form of laptops, and the, the county issued cell phones to certain members, you know, to, to Frederick City, who I think for, you know, at least three or four years have, have provided that type of electronic tablet format. And that's fine. I mean, I'm fine if we don't want to go that route. All I'm saying is, we can't, we can't receive the, the, the indication that we are moving more toward an electronic format of communication to conduct city business as a body, and then in the same breath, have a level of expectation that we're going to do that on a mishmash of personal electronic devices. If, if that's how we want to run things, that's fine. I just, I don't, I haven't found that jurisdictions that have taken that step into the electronic format have done so in that manner.
I agree with Kristin. I, I think if, if we're going to go electronic, we have to be uniform in what we're doing. I have an iPad, I think Don has an iPad. I have a first-generation iPad that I can guarantee you won't necessarily do what the new iPads do, but most importantly, yeah, if you want to be consistent, whether it's, whether it's iPads or it's a Windows-based thing, I, I think it is the way to go. I, I just think that's the way to do. And there should be no question, but we all know, and make sure the citizens understand it, these are devices that would be purchased by the city and owned by the city. These would not be our devices, and they would not be, I, I have my iPad to do my personal business and my business in my office on. But I agree with Kristin. I think that we should have an iPad or a device, i.e., that is owned by the city, that is consistent with, with everybody, so across the board, we're not dealing with different bases, whether it's an Apple base or a Windows-based. And I think it's high time we do it. I think that's the last thing left.
So what if there's a council member that doesn't want to use any electronic device?
They don't use them.
I'm not saying anybody has to.
Or what if I want to use my own personal device, because I don't want two iPads?
That's, I think that's your personal decision.
But I mean, if most communication is on email, okay, most communication's on email, anything in my email is open to the, these Public Information Act requests on the city server. That's fine. And the same email that I get on my iPad is the same email that's on that server. So it doesn't, it's not device-specific. You know, it's what information is on that server that's, you know, going over through the email.
But I, I think there's two issues. I think the one issue is, is Kristin's issue on freedom of information requests. The other issue is getting us into the generation of electronics. And, and so, this isn't about this council, this is about the city. And so, the, the body consistently has the same electronic equipment, and when we leave, the equipment stays here. If it's still useful, the next council uses it.
Well, that's the thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
If it's still useful. Can you please tell me, because every time that I turn around at my house, when this one here is already outdated, and that one's outdated, and I don't really care, I use the phone, or I use the car. the phone or I use the car.
Computers usually last between, depending on what they are, my Windows.
These bases last about three years. My Apple base lasts about five or six, but.
Honestly.
And I'll use an example to that analogy. When we came into office in 2001, these meetings were televised.
Right.
And in that timeframe, the equipment that we have has become outdated.
Correct. But it seems as though computers.
We have changed the format in which we communicate these meetings and the information associated with these meetings to the public. And all I'm saying is, if.
Kristin, I don't care. I'm only asking the question.
We're going to go through that technological process on those other planes. I'm not certain why we wouldn't do that in this venue as well, you know, in part for document management, you know, to be able, and I guess maybe I've seen this firsthand, you know, and I hate to use this example, you know, because I hate to bring my professional life, you know, into this public office. But, you know, in the town that I manage, you know, this occurred a couple of years ago.
The Camtasia thing, right?
And it was okay. Yeah, now, everybody has their, you know, a municipal-issue electronic device, and instead of getting on, you know, on the system and going through and finding a charter, you know, the charter, each person, you know, keeps a copy of the charter on their device in a manner in which they feel is most user-friendly to them. And that goes with any number of devices where you create these folders to say, okay, here are the documents, you know, associated with each piece of subject matter that is then logged into this device in a manner that is structured to the format in which is most user-friendly for me to understand, to participate in the conversation.
If I have a device that is this city's only, and I have any issues with it, I can bring it in to the IT department here and leave it and say, I need you to do this for me or that for me. I'm not about to do that with my personal iPad. One, there's too many privacy issues. Two, first thing I do is bring my own personal iPad to have IT look at it, and I'm now, as a city councilman, using city staff to fix my own personal equipment, even though it's all being done to try to work with the city. And I agree with Kristin, you know, we're all sitting around with city codes lugging them around. They should all, they should all be on the electronic equipment, and it should be that council members, I mean, I know we make a fortune in salary. These items aren't necessarily inexpensive in comparison to a yearly salary by a councilman to say to somebody that we're all electronic, and if you don't have a device like that, if you want to keep up with us, you need to go buy one.
No, I'm not, I think.
So, I mean, I think it just makes sense to do it.
I support the purchase and having that available to every councilperson. I personally would not choose an additional device, because the device I have, the whole point is, I can check three email accounts from my one device.
Right.
But what I say or what I communicate on that email is on the server here, so even if I send a message from my iPad, it's still showing up in sent email.
I understand.
It's not device-specific in that sense. I can still.
Unless you create it on that personal device and then transfer it in some other format when you communicate.
I don't understand what you mean by that. In other words, if I create it in Word and then copy and paste it to the email.
And created in a different data format, and you've created it with, you know, and I hate reading these dumb, you know, tech magazines, because I understand, you know, just this little bit, but their ability to go in and sort of further break down that information, and you can clearly see the escalation in legal requests for that additional, more in-depth information-type gathering. I mean, it's happening.
Let me make a comment. Kristin, you and I disagree on a lot of things, probably most things, but you're absolutely right on this. Fact is, when I was in the General Assembly, I didn't have to go out and buy my own computer. The General Assembly provided the computer. The fact is that I serve on a board that you appointed me to. They give me an iPad, and it's a much smaller government than this is. It's time for this government, it's time for the city to get into the 21st century and come up to date and do what we need to do. Electronics is a thing. Mayor, I got the same problem you got, but, you know, if necessary, I'll throw it away, I guess, or give it to somebody. And you're a really bright, young fellow who knows his electronics, and you can figure out the issue.
I don't have a, like I said, I support going.
Marty's pointing at me, not Penny. Nope, it's the phone, it's the car, or it's the feet.
If I want to do a private thing.
And if anybody needs to do any emails to me, and it's creating a problem for the city, tell them, take me off the email list. Simple as that.
I don't find iPads convenient, but I have no problem with it as a city.
Now, Lou did raise an issue, and he kept talking about a device. And frankly, I'm not, I'm not wedded to an iPhone or an iPad.
Right, no, I'm not either, whatever.
An Android, an Android operating device suits me just as well, as long as I can pick up Wi-Fi.
I guess this is a point of clarification for the clerk perhaps, but in the future, then, when we get our weekly agenda distributions, would it be similar to the county, then, where there's like a link to the agenda that's embedded in that email? So all we'd have to do is click on that and.
You can have your own login. It would be a different website through Novus. It would be your own login with your own password. No one else has it. You can make notes on all the documents. It'll look the same as what it is when you go to our website now. You can pull them all up, and you can make, you can make notes electronically.
And one last point to that effect, because let's say we fully embrace that changeover in system, and I go in, I grab the document, I pull it off, I go home, I throw it on my computer. Let's say I'm two years, two days over doing my Norton antivirus update, retype it, spam send it back in. I want, you know, some staff to look at it. They open it up, and I have now, you know, sent that information electronically from my personal system to the city system. And let's say there's an attachment or some format which corrupts part of the city system, and then Lola's sending out, you know, hate mails, saying, you know, Roger, send that through there. A city-issued device, which is fully integrated on the city system, would not be subject to that same type of breach.
That risk, right?
Right. And that's why I said, if we're going to get more electronic in our format, I just think that.
Well, that's an argument for going Apple, but that's a whole other discussion.
I do have a question about the notes, because when we talked about this, God, I think it was the last council before, I always insisted that you could make, could you make notes or comments? Because that's what I like about paper. I can write all over the paper, and I often do.
Right.
Apparently, we have that. But now that we have all these public information requests, if I make notes, I'd like to know if that's subject to the public.
I think it would be subject.
Okay, so then, here's my question. Are the notes that I take on my paper right now available? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Aaron would be the one to answer that for sure, but I do think that it is the same as the emails. It would be reviewed and redacted if it was personal information, things like that.
Or if, good luck reading it, but.
Yeah, me too. That's all right, Donna, I still want the packet. You can do whatever. I do want the packet.
Would the note-taking.
I don't care about the emails. I want the packet.
That's ludicrous.
Would the note-taking.
I have had two direct experiences.
That's ludicrous.
Two direct experiences to that very question.
Right.
Which clearly were part and parcel to the deliberations which occurred in those two experiences. Yeah, the notes were clearly public, fair game, if you will, and, you know, they're, that's going to happen with.
So the other question I have is.
So if anybody, can I, excuse me, please.
These go in the trash.
I mean, I have to go with what I, okay, so I have, I have the packet, okay, fine and dandy, but you know what? Unless somebody's watching the TV, I'm going to be doing my notes, and it may not even be on what this is, okay? Unless it's on the paper that's given in this packet.
That's why we have an ethical obligation as individual members to meet that Public Information Act requirement that is required.
Well, I don't care. I'm just saying, whatever I scribble down over here.
Right, and I'm not saying that I have anything to hide, but I'm just, want clarification on these questions.
No, I don't either. You know what? You can talk this to death.
My other question, though, is if, with this note-taking feature, is it available on, let's say, a desktop computer, or is it only, so that login thing?
You log into Novus.
So it's not device-specific?
It's not device-based.
It's Internet-based? Okay. And once again, it's not device-specific, so it wouldn't matter what document or what device you're doing the work on, it's all available on the server.
It's supposed to say, from what I'm hearing, there certainly are at least three votes to go for.
That's why I said, we need it to death, okay? Just don't get, don't purchase me one.
I think it's just up to IT to decide.
So if you're interested, contact Donna, and she'll.
I'm interested.
And I can show you what it looks like with the notes, too. I mean, that's just a part of this discussion. It's what they, what we started with, but it blossomed, which is good. But if you want to see how it looks to put the notes on and how that works, let me know through.
And I think I can safely say that, you know, whether it's a Freedom of Information Act request or it's a lawsuit in discovery, the question is, any written documentation you have that exists at all about this subject produced. So it would encompass anything that you have written at all about anything that's in your possession that would be in the public domain. And in lawsuits, it goes beyond that public domain. It goes to everything, so.
Okay. All right. The last item on the agenda is regarding the petition on collective bargaining and binding arbitration. On Tuesday, May 27, signed petitions were delivered to City Hall. Let me just read the language as it is, that was, I'm assuming was on the petition. This is for collective bargaining and binding arbitration for non-management employees of the police and fire departments to add new Section 802A to the Charter of the City of Hagerstown. Non-management employees of the police and fire departments of the City of Hagerstown shall be entitled to designate a union to act as their exclusive representative and to engage in collective bargaining with the city regarding wages, benefits, and working conditions. Not an issue. The city council shall provide an ordinance for binding arbitration with the exclusive representatives in order to resolve labor disputes. The ordinance shall provide for the appointment of a neutral arbitrator. The factors should be considered by the arbitrator and the procedures for implementing the arbitrator's decision when passing or amending the city's budget. Any ordinance that is enacted shall prohibit strikes or work stoppages by the represented employees. Now, for the last year and a half, we've been negotiating these contracts. It's been my understanding that these negotiations have been ongoing. It is also my understanding that whenever this petition effort was started, we continued in those negotiations. There are legal requirements, now that these petitions have been turned in, for us to take particular actions. So we have our attorney here today to outline what those, what that process will be and what those procedures will be.
The section of the law that's involved is Section 4-305 of the local government title of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The requirements are that the petition shall have at least 20% of the qualified voters for the municipal general election sign the petition. I've talked to the county election board. They indicate to me that the 20% number is 4,814 signatures. Now, the law provides, the first step, once we get the petition, we shall verify that each individual who signs the petition is a qualified voter for the municipal general election. The county election board has indicated to me that they are unable to do that verification. They cite the fact that the law says the legislative body shall verify, not the county election board or any other entity. But their main issue with doing the verification is that it needs to be done within 60 days from the date the petition was presented. So I calculate that to be by July 26. And they are in the process of preparing for a primary for the gubernatorial election. They said, I believe, they're starting the early voting procedure within a couple of weeks, and they said they would not be available to do that verification for us. So the issue, one of the issues that we need to consider and decide is, how will we verify that the threshold of 4,814 signatures have been met? And we need to do that, as I said, within 60 days, and actually, we have to do it probably a little earlier than that, because we have to pass a resolution, if there are sufficient signatures, within 60 days, doing one of three things according to the law. The council can adopt what the petition requests as a charter change, and of course, if they adopt it based upon the petition, then it would become a charter change, and that would be the end of the process. Or they can submit it to the voters for a decision in favor or against the charter change, and they can do that either at the next regular municipal election, which would be 2016, or they can choose to hold a special election. The problem with holding a special election is that the law says that it shall be held not less than 40, nor more than 60 days after this resolution is passed by the city council, which would put it probably mid-September. And the same issue in discussing this with the county board is presented as far as the verification of signatures are concerned. They indicated they would not be able to conduct a special election, because they would be preparing for the gubernatorial general election with early voting, I believe, in October in the general election in.
And remind us of the cost of the special.
They told us it would cost $200,000. Last time, they said that's why they had to switch to the general election calendar.
Well, they quoted me a figure, and they said this is a rough estimate of between 60 and 70 thousand.
See, that's not what they said. That is not what they said.
No, no, no.
I'm not arguing with you.
With that figure, the only thing that comes to mind is, I know when we were having problems.
But I wouldn't do it for 60 or 80 either.
No, but we were having problems before, and this had to do with our election. This was back, okay? And the cost of our election, if we did it, the city of Hagerstown would have been $60,000.
That's not my thinking.
No, no, it's what they told us then, Marty.
The, you know, it's going to be problematic to have a special election, because we would have to, according to the county board, they wouldn't be willing to set it up and do it for us.
Well, and we'd have to pay 60 or 80, which we don't have.
Correct. That's what they.
We don't have that.
The, so.
And we wouldn't do it anyhow.
I mean, it's your decision, but if we verify the signatures and you don't wish to adopt this, seems to me we're left with putting it on the ballot in 2016. Now, the law does say we get to prepare the draft of the ballot question, as it would appear on the ballot, and there are certain notice requirements, you know, before the election that we can get into later. But I believe the first decision we have to make is, how are we going to verify the signatures? I believe that I have heard some reluctance to having the city do it, because it might be perceived as biased, as having a position one way or the other on this, and that if we. And that if, if we verified the signatures, they might be challenged on that basis.
Although that is what the law says, the legislative body is charged with that duty.
Right. And, and really, it's, it's a question of taking a name and an address and comparing it with a list. And the county did say they could provide us with a, in fact, they said even a digital list if we wanted to, that we could do it by computer. So it would be a matter of, you know, identifying the name and address and saying, yes, this is a qualified voter. And the, the law does not talk about verifying signatures. So the law does not require that we verify the, the signature. It only requires that we determine that they're qualified voters.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there anything that would prohibit us from asking an outside group to count the signatures? For instance, the League of Women Voters? If, could, could we, that would, that would take care of that conflict of interest issue. And that's an organization that is, is an outstandingly honest organization. Takes their responsibilities very seriously. I would hope that, if in fact, that can be done, that the other side to this, to this issue would be willing to agree on that. Because if this turns out to be a very close election with, with a dozen votes, 100 votes, that casts a shadow on it.
Well, let's time out for a second. Because first of all, I don't think they're going to have 4,800 valid signatures, based on the fact that they had third-party people who were hired to gather signatures at major events, much of which are attended by people not from the city of Hagerstown. Signatures were gathered under false pretenses, lies that were told to the public to get people to sign this petition that said the city of Hagerstown was taking things away from the fire department or a fire union, which is completely and patently false. I spoke with a member of the leadership of the union. He said, well, this is our only resort. We weren't getting anywhere with the city, which is again untrue. The question was never whether the fire department was going to get more. It was a question of how much. It was communicated to them, we needed to get our assessment from the state to see where we were going to be in our budget. And you can see by the very fact that we approved a contract today, that there is no need for binding arbitration, that there is no need for this whole effort. And what really strikes me is that this fire union elected this body right here, the five council members sitting in front of me, endorsed by every, every single one of you. And then to have that group then come in and start this effort and then accuse us of not negotiating in good faith, to me, is a slap in the face to this body right here. Because if anybody was negotiating in bad faith during this last year and a half, it was the fire union. So that's, I just want to make that perfectly clear from the outset. And I think we should do everything we can to prevent this initiative from succeeding. It was told to me, well, I hope no public resources are being expended to fight this effort. Well, guess what? Public resources are already being expended. We have to figure out who's going to verify signatures. If we have a special election, it costs $60,000. So, you know, maybe those kinds of things should have been considered before this bogus petition initiative was started in the first place.
Well, let me, Mary, you make good points, some good points. But let me clarify. I don't support binding arbitration. I think it's a terrible thing for the taxpayers. But the fact is, if these signatures have to be counted, then our clerk has to count them. And she certainly doesn't have the time to do a regular job and, and to count these signatures. This is not going to be an easy task.
Well, I have asked our attorney to get clarity on, what happens if we do nothing? What happens if we don't count the signatures because our board of elections tells us we can't do it?
It's a fair question.
Or we don't have the staffing in order to do it and we're not willing to pay for it? The other question I have for our attorney is, what if folks find out exactly what this petition is about and they realize that they signed it under false pretenses? Is there a way for them to be able to take their name off the petition? And so he will be getting more information about that. But that is a question that I have that I would like to get clarity on.
What you have provided us this evening is a copy specifically of the language.
I didn't provide.
Right, look at staff, you guys, whoever. And what I have is an original copy of, of the petition that one of the subcontracted parties, I think from Change Health Systems or something, that was contracted, subcontracted to, to go around and collect signatures. And this I received actually outside of City Hall a couple of months back. And the individual that I received it from explained to me that the reason that I needed to sign it was because the city was cutting the fire staff in half, which is neither here nor there. Because as I sort of got approached from folks, they, they became a bit more educated in their approach, sales pitch, whatever you would like to call it. And I think it's important because as a citizen, when I am asked to, to consider signing something, I like to be able to understand clearly what it says. And, you know, there, there's a lot of big words in here. But there are a couple of key points that I had, just as it relates specifically to the document. And the one is, it wasn't, it wasn't any employee group gathering signatures. It was a third party, a subcontracted party that was then further subcontracted out of, out of a firm from DC, I believe. But it mentions specifically two groups of employees that this would apply to, the police and the fire. But at no time during this entire process was the term "police" used in the gathering of signatures. And I think that that speaks a little to that false pretense. So I think one of the base questions I have as it relates to the language is, if the fire union contracted with an entity solely, and it was solely that entity that, that entity that contracted to do that, the inclusion of other employee groups, how that applies? Because we have four union groups in this city. And so for me, if it's contracted by one and they're talking about it applying to two, does that mean it applies to more? Because it uses the term "non-management." And nothing was ever disclosed to, through this public process about it applying to police. And, you know, apparently it wasn't paid for by the representative of police union organization. The second is, what you guys don't see is this, I'm going to guess this font's about a four. But it says, "Notice to signers." And without a magnifying glass, the information you provide on this petition may be used to change your voter registration address. Now, if I'm a citizen and I'm being asked to sign a petition to participate in some position on something, that to me is a pretty important thing. You're going to change my voter registration address, which means my voter registration card may get sent somewhere else.
Can they do that?
And it's in a font of about a four.
But can they do that?
And if I'm a person that wants, that's going to sign this petition, I really want to know that I'm signing off on a document that's automatically going to change my voter registration card to some other address.
I don't understand that.
And there's actually a couple of things in here. Because it says, I, I can't even read this. You know, my wife tells me I'm going blind, but, "Please print all information other than your signature. P.O. boxes are generally valid." I'm sorry. "P.O. boxes are not generally valid." I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean they are or they aren't? Because if the election board isn't going to verify these and our legislative body is, who determines what that term "generally" means in the context of what's going to be considered a valid signature or not? I'm not an attorney, I'm just a lay guy sort of reading this thing.
Good question.
"By signing this petition, you agree that the above-mentioned charter amendment proposal should be placed on the ballot as a questions." I'm not sure whether that's one or two. And that, and, and that to the best of your knowledge, you are registered to vote in the state of Maryland and the city of Hagerstown and are eligible to have your signature counted for petition purposes. Now, that I think begs my last question, which is, under this circulator's affidavit, there, there's a paragraph here, and I don't know who this applies to. I'm assuming this means the circulator, the person going around and getting signatures. But in this section, it says, "To the best of your knowledge, as the signer, you believe you're a voter in the city of Hagerstown." But under the circulator's affidavit, it says specifically, "Under the penalties of perjury, I affirm," as that circulator, "that the person signing is a registered voter of the city of Hagerstown." Is that just common language? Or does that person have a list that they're supposed to be carrying around that affirms that?
There is a, there's a general state petition election law that applies throughout the state. And it, it specifies what, how the format of the petition and what language has to be in the petition. However, at the start of the section that sets that forth, it says that these provisions do not apply to local government.
Municipal government.
Right.
That's right. They're, they're fairly excluded from those types of state-level processes.
Right.
Especially.
But, so I'm, I'm only speculating, but I think they followed the state format.
In fact, I think Baltimore City is the only entity that is included in that non-local provision.
That, that may be. But, but that's what's kind of confusing. There's a state law and it talks about withdrawing your signature, the question you raised, Mayor, but it's all in a section that has at the very start of it, this section doesn't apply to municipal elections. So where does that lead?
So does that mean we can make our rules?
Yes.
And I guess then, one rule that, that I would be interested in, whether it be for this or any other petition, because we're sort of being stuck between two, you know, rules of procedure, one that is clearly defined but doesn't apply to us and one that's not clearly defined but may apply to us, is who verifies the circulator's? Because, in other words, let, let's say you're a group of residents, you go out in your neighborhood and you get signatures. I mean, you know, you know Betty Smith down the street because she's your neighbor and, you know, you, you have some, some, you know, petition you're going to gather. But this is a pretty significant sum of signatures and a pretty significant issue of change. And if, if the original entity subcontracted to a party well away from here, who then thirdly subcontracted to another party to gather signatures, which entity or what entity is responsible for verifying the, you know, the, that the circulator is the actual circulator that was stamped in and, you know, and got those approvals? I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, it's, if the person who signed the affidavit saying, "I swear to this," that they're the ones that are responsible to, to bear.
So there's no verification process at all to that?
Well, no verification. And I could just go stamp about 60 of these things. You could just see there isn't one. I mean, we've all been approached, I've been approached countless times. I could have signed Mickey Mouse on there and it would have been, they wouldn't have stopped me.
If I could go out and stamp 60 of these things and, and say, "I got 60 pages worth of signatures," and it could have been 20 other people got it.
That's the problem.
And I don't know what the message those 20 other people that I may or may not have signed for gave or provided to the public in that process of deliberation.
Well, more importantly, more importantly, as I understand it, there's not a requirement that we match signatures. So God at the David becomes extremely important. When God at the David, they swear that these people sign. You follow what I'm saying?
I understand.
Yeah, right, I do understand. And we don't know if that's really that person's signature, actually. I, I think that, you know.
Like, I feel worried at this point of talking about numbers of signatures. And I'm still at the point of trying to figure out what the procedure of gathering signatures, based on this document that I was able to receive.
Right.
Is and was.
But how do we know it's that person's signature?
Yep.
This, excuse me.
Lou.
I'm sorry.
I'm the caretaker of the.
You are.
I, I think that there are a number of issues here. And I think the answer is an attorney general's opinion. I think that if we have, if they have the right number of signatures, then we have a referendum in 2016. It's very simple. I mean, it's not a complicated thing. What is complicated, though, is what you've just brought up. As I understand what our council has told us, we are not matching signatures. We are only verifying that the people's names on the petition are registered voters. Now, I tend to think if, I, I know the woman who approached me lived in Martinsburg, West Virginia. And when we had a lengthy discussion, it was obvious that she never even heard of the word "binding arbitration." She had no idea it existed. And when, you know, it was a personal insult to me when I heard her tell people that we had taken away the health insurance of the fire people and that we limited the police to a 1% pay increase and it was insulting. I've yet to get any apologies from, from any of the firefighters for personally insulting me because they were talking about me doing it. But if we find out on a random basis that there are people who sign these things that are not registered voters of the city of Hagerstown, my own personal opinion, and we need an attorney general's opinion. If there, if there's a sworn certification by the collectors that, that these people are and these people sign and they aren't, then are these petitions even valid? I don't have any idea what the answer to that is. I'd feel a lot more secure about it if we were matching signatures versus just looking at names. I can tell you the lady that was hired in this occasion from Martinsburg, this was, oh, maybe two weeks before the, before everything got passed. She told me they originally got started at 10:50 an hour, but they were down to crunch time and didn't have enough signatures. And now they were being paid 8:50 an hour unless they got X amount of signatures and then they would get the extra $2 an hour. I have no idea. And if all the signatures turn out to be registered voters of Hagerstown, I guess that's one thing. But if we start seeing signatures that aren't and we have a sworn affidavit from the person who collected them that they are, you know, I think we need an attorney general's opinion. I have, I have no issue with this thing going to the referendum if they have the right amount of signatures. We all have the issue that the public has been totally deceived.
And not to mention the fact that there's no basis for the need for binding arbitration since we successfully completed the negotiation of the contract.
Whether there is or not, the simple fact is, and I know there are firefighters listening, these are my friends, great deal of respect for these people. Matter of fact, I won't even say anything tonight. I got so upset today that I sat there and heard one of our citizens be told that we had taken their health insurance away, that we had done this to them, we had done that to them. And then had a discussion and found out the person didn't even have any idea what binding arbitration was, let alone discuss if that's what this petition was about. It ruined my entire weekend. And I tried to figure out why after 19 years of doing this. I was as upset as I've ever been. And I came to the realization, when, when I played football in high school, I can remember our coaches telling us, "You know, if we didn't scream at you, it's because we didn't care about you. If we didn't yell, it's because we didn't think you could do better. And the reason we're on your butt is because you're good and, and we want to work with you." And that day when I was, heard that, when I felt like, as I, as I felt like one of my children had grossly disappointed me, just grossly disappointed me. And what, what could I say to them? There's nothing you can say. I, I know, and I, I think they got the signatures. I can't imagine, I've known firefighters, firefighters want to do something, they're going to do it. I said that long ago when the, their, their big fundraiser started and they wanted to do it at the fairgrounds. And there was a lot of opposition to it because of what you would expect would happen to the property. And I said then, I said, "Only the firefighters." If they said they were going to have this big thing at the fairgrounds and they'd return it to us in the same condition that it was, only they would do that." And they would. And I guarantee you, if they said they're going out and getting 4,000 signatures, hell, they can do that. they can do that. And this will get on the ballot, and it'll be an issue in 2016. And that's the way it'll go. And I have no problems with any of that. I'm just hoping that maybe one of these days, some of them come to me personally and apologize for, for the insults that were given. I have never in 19 years, to my knowledge, ever made a vote that was not support of labor, ever. If I have, I'd like to know about it. I know Kristin was here and Penny was here for the Springsteen study, or Spring, what's, what's his name?
Springsted.
Springsted study. It was a 3-2 vote to pass that. It was a huge thing. I have supported union and labor my entire life, and to have them lie to well over 5,000 of our citizens, it's not like, it's not like they told somebody something. Well over 5,000 people have been told, I don't know how many mistruths. I only can speak of the ones that I personally heard. And it started out, I almost made an ass out of myself, I can tell you, I got really upset. I spent a half an hour there with the lady doing the petition and the lady who didn't know whether she wanted to sign or not. And when we were all done, we were all very thankful for each other. The lady doing the petition thanked me, I thanked her, we all settled down and calmed down, and we talked about the fact that, you know, pensions, health insurance, and are our firefighters underpaid? Oh, yeah. Are teachers underpaid? Yeah. Is 90% of the middle class in this nation underpaid? You're darn right. But I got to tell you, there is a whole lot of people in this world, basically including me, who would love to be able to have a pension. The only reason I have health insurance and the quality I have it is because I'm a, I'm a employee of the city of Hagerstown. But again, it all gets back to the fact, for me, it's personal, because it was said about me, and it was said to thousands of citizens. And, and we'll deal with it in 2016. I think you're going to have the signatures. I think we need to have the answer from the Attorney General. What happens if, in fact, these certifications do not turn out to be true? Are we then forced to match signatures? I don't know. But, you know.
We can match signatures anyway.
Let's get the count. Let's establish if it's there. I assume it's there. I would be shocked if the firefighters were not able to do whatever they said they're going to do, they're going to do. I'm convinced of that, and we'll get it on the ballot, and we'll have an open discourse at that stage of the game. And that's only the beginning, because candidly, I'd write the referendum exactly as it's worded, because that's just the beginning. Because if you read the wording of that referendum, you've got a whole lot of legislation to pass and decide how to word it, because that referendum and that petition in no way, shape, or form does anything but give the sitting body in 2016 the right to write an ordinance that I will tell you would not scare me. Under this petition and what we would be directed to do, I could write an ordinance right now that included binding arbitration that wouldn't scare me, I can tell you that. So, I think we get on with it, we, we follow the law, which says legislative body does it, which is us. I'm assuming that means we appoint somebody that is within the city. I don't, I, I don't want to play the game of mistrust. That's what the law says. It doesn't say we go to an outside third party and say, "Somebody may not trust us, so we give it to somebody else." We do it. We verify the signatures. If we find that there are not, that there are signatures that are not citizens, after there's a sworn affidavit, we need an Attorney General's opinion of what you do about it. And if the signatures are there, they're there. I don't think any of us has any thought process to spend $60,000 for a special election, that there's no way to arrange within the next 30 to 90 days. And that gives us about 3 and 1/2 years until we have an election coming up. And then you'll see how many candidates run who say they support binding arbitration and how many don't, and the citizens will vote for it. The only thing I hope is if we get there, that the citizens do an informed vote, unlike the petition drive. And that's going to be our job as a, a city government to make sure that the facts are before the public of what they're voting for, and that they're voting for binding arbitration and what the facts are. And that may very well include listing not names, but it's, it's high time citizens understand what the cost is to, for our employees, which is way, way beyond salary. It goes to benefits also. So let's, we got a contract signed, we count the votes, count the signatures, put it on the 2016 ballot, and we go from there. That's my attitude.
Well, like you said, the most perplexing thing about this whole thing, and I mentioned it before, is that this union endorsed every single person on this council, and everybody was elected, they have probably the most friendly council you could possibly ask for. And as the renowned diplomat Richard Holbrook once said, "The method should meet the moment and the style should meet the situation." And I think in this case, they've got it all wrong, because we have proven by the fact that we've successfully concluded the contract negotiations, there is no need for binding arbitration. And I hope, like you said, people really understand what effectively binding arbitration is, which would basically be taking the decision of financial commitments out of the hands of the elected officials and into the hands of a third-party negotiator or arbitrator. That's ultimately the bottom line of what we're looking at here.
Okay, let me, let me just.
Mr. Munson.
Thank you, Mayor. My point was a very simple point. The city clerk does not have the time, the week, the two weeks, the three weeks that it's going to take to sit down and verify all these signatures. If we don't want an independent outside organization, I guess the question becomes, Bruce, do we have the money to hire some people that can count these signatures, verify these signatures, do whatever the law requires with these signatures, in lieu of the city clerk having to do it? This is not going to be an easy task, almost 10,000 signatures. It's going to take time.
My estimation is in 60 days, 9,000 signatures is about 150 signatures that need to be verified per day, and the clock has already started ticking, so we're more up to 200 signatures a day that have to be verified. I'm willing to spend a couple hours a day, quite frankly, because I want to make sure that these are valid signatures, that is, you know, everything is tight as can be.
Okay, well, that's.
So I'm willing to help, if that's what we have to do to gain, you know, to get this thing going and disposed of. Any other thoughts?
I'd be willing to help.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
And I said this before to the council, so I'll turn to the representatives out here. Like the other council members, I was approached with people who absolutely didn't know what they were talking about, told total fabrications, and insulted me personally, and it bothered me, like it did Councilman Metzner and many of the others. That is the worst process that I could think of. You go in and hire, hire guns, you use techniques brought in by the national, we know what went on. But when people tell me lies, and I know they're telling them to citizens, and in good faith, here's all I ever promised, and you know that. I said, "I tried to do my best to balance the city's needs, bargaining unit's needs, and most of all, the citizens' needs." And I think the offers you got consistently through that negotiating period did that. I know they did that. We offered you consistently, within the range of what we were offering to other units, more than some, less, a little bit less than the police. A very fair, and we struggled to keep our tax rate at 11 cents. Now, how infinite do you think the tax rate is? We're already going to be with the highest taxed major cities in the state. How, how elastic do you think that is? We're going to have to fight like crazy to keep from doing, raising taxes again. And yet we, because people here understood that the employees had been through hard times, we built in some things that, to be honest, we probably maybe shouldn't have, because I don't know if we could afford them. And I know some of your people were saying, "All the stuff about benefits isn't true," telling you that. It is true. Go through this budget. I mean, somebody denied, I know you hired people to look in the budget. Somebody tell me that the city isn't picking up what is defined by the, the federal government as a platinum healthcare plan? You have an advanced retirement plan that we went to in '98, I think it was? We're picking up the extra costs there, but, which by the way, I don't know if we can sustain building the reserve in that for a couple of years because of the tax base. So, I just don't know, and everybody knows what happens with binding arbitration, and everybody knows that. So, and that's why you're fighting for it. You know, you know that people assume government is infinitely elastic and has an infinite supply and can just tax. Well, we can't. And so, I'm personally insulted, I resent it, and being lied to, and all the things that happened. And I want to say it to you directly, they heard this before.
Any other comments or feedback? Questions for our attorney to follow up on? We have the question of, about the circulator's affidavit and whether or not, if, if the signatures turned in by that circulator are not valid, whether or not every, every signature that that person collected is valid, I think that's a question for follow-up among the others.
Is that what we're saying?
I mean, unless someone has a better way to, to find out the answers to these questions, it seems to me that's the.
That's the ultimate authority.
So the issue is, if one signature is bad on the petition, can we throw the entire petition out?
From, from that, from that individual who.
From that particular.
From that circulator.
Yeah.
So you have a circulator who certifies under penalties of perjury that these are all people who are residents of the city and voters, and they're not, does that make that circulator's petition invalid or not? And the reason you would ask that question is why would you have that affidavit on there if it didn't mean anything?
Well, but, I mean, are you saying if there's 10 signatures, if one's not a city resident and the other nine are, the, those nine get thrown out?
That's what I'm asking.
That's my question.
He swears that they're all valid.
Right.
The, the issue is this, Bill. We are not, as I understand from your opinion, we are not comparing signatures.
Right.
Okay? I'm trying to figure out why you would have a circulator's affidavit, okay? And it seems to me the reason you have a circulator's affidavit is that circulator is swearing.
Right, they're verifying.
That they're verifying that that person actually signed it, and it wasn't the circulator that signed it.
Right.
Right? Because otherwise, all you would have to do is get a voter list from the city of Hagerstown, and the circulator could sit in there and, and sign.
Well, how do we know that didn't happen?
Well, the question is.
Especially when there's an incentive plan. Sorry, Lou, but.
That's why the issue is, given we're not matching signatures. If, in fact, the circulator has certified under penalties of perjury that these people are what they say they are, I'm talking about per circulator. So if we find a circulator who was sworn under oath that this is a voting member of the city of Hagerstown, and it is in fact not, does that void the signatures that that circulator obtained? Not all the signatures on all the petitions, but only that.
That circulator.
And what is, and my question is, if it does not, then why, what is the purpose for that affidavit? Why would you have an affidavit?
Well, it's there.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's there. I mean, they, they put it there.
In legal construction, you assume that something is there for a reason, that it's not superfluous. And if it's there for a reason and the signatures don't match, then, or the, it doesn't, you got to, I don't know the answer to the question, but I think that's a reasonable question to ask.
The other question that I guess we need clarity on is the, the question about un-signing the petition. If people sign an affidavit that says, "I signed this under false pretenses, take my name off," if that's a possibility, I would like clarification on that. And then I think the other, the other question I think that was discussed that I don't think we, we discussed yet tonight, but I believe there was a question of whether or not a charter amendment petition related to collective bargaining was even legal, or whether that's even.
Well.
A feasible avenue which to go about doing that.
I, I asked our labor attorney, and he, the answer's kind of strange. The, all of the federal labor laws exempt municipal corporations from the law, so to the extent that we have any inconsistency with a federal labor law, that wouldn't invalidate what's taking place here, because those laws don't apply to us, was what I was told by Mr. Vernon.
Thank you.
And I would just repeat one last time, under the, under the petition that is in front of us, I am not afraid of binding arbitration as presented in this petition. And we can talk about that at a later time.
One question I had from reading the petition is, what triggers binding arbitration?
Right.
If they walk in and say, "We want $1 million per firefighter," and we say, "No," do they say, "Okay, let's go to binding arbitration?"
You don't get what you want, you say, "We want binding arbitration."
I think there's a lot of answers that are right in front of us, that have not been discussed at all, that cause me no fear at all about any outcome of this, and I'd prefer to discuss that offline, to be honest with you.
Sounds good. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead.
Votes, the petitions are going to have to be counted. It's going to take a lot of time to count the petitions. I am not least, least bit interested in trying to call Danny and hearing, "Oh, she's counting petitions, she won't be back to next, she, she'll, she'll get back to you next week." I call Danny five and six and seven times a day for help. I don't want to wait a week or even two days for help. I'm not the least bit interested in calling the city clerk, whom I call frequently, for help, and hearing the same thing. I think we need to come up with a, a policy, an open public policy of how these things are going to be counted, and who's going to do it, when they're going to do it, within the time constraints that were required to follow. I think that needs to be done first. Lou's right in that regard. The process is going to go on because that's the law.
Well, I think the city administrator is in a very good position if we have to do that, figure out how to do that, and it should be public. Absolutely. I mean, absolutely it should be public and it should be transparent as can be. I, what I don't want to do is, is not have somebody who signed the petition have their voice counted, even though they were signed under pretenses of which they didn't understand.
Ms. Nine.
I have the helmet on, okay? First off, I say to my father, who's 86 years old, "Dad, he worked at Pangborn, he worked at New York Central Am Works. We went through strikes, okay?" I said to him, "Okay, binding arbitration, Dad, what does it mean to you?" And specific was, is that you have the parties that sit down, and you have the arbitrator that's there, and then the process begins, okay? So clarity for me is, is binding arbitration as we see it now, okay? And I want everybody on this council to be aware of. You can, Alan, I've spent more time probably with you. I make no promises to anybody. I go with what my gut feels, and that's what I do. My father worked for Pangborn, my brothers worked for Pangborn, my husband worked for East Alco. We have lived through strikes, we have lived through lockouts. So, I'm not the person to really ask, because I want to know exactly what is binding arbitration now. And that's the end of my comment. Okay?
Anyone else? That brings us to city administrators' comments.
Just two reminders. One is no meeting next week with the MML conference, so no meeting on June 10th. June 17th, Urban Partners will be here to present their report, just a reminder on that. And that's it for me.
Council comments.
Start with me.
Please, Ms. Nine.
I'm going to roll. Honestly, I told Don tonight, I said, "You know, Don, from now on, when there's a." Honestly, I told Don tonight, I said, "You know, Don, from now on, when there's a problem, I'm going to just come over and grab him, and so he can witness the problem that I'm having." The almshouse, which is not Kristin's favorite topic, but it is mine, and it is a part of our history, and it is the last part that's probably remaining, I think, in the state of Maryland or on the East Coast. Roy can't be sure of that, but Kathy would know. I've taken it upon myself to go down and to take care of it. The city has done what it's had to do as far as the breakage of windows and everything else. I would love to, when it came to this whole Civil War thing tonight, to be able to see somebody connected with the Civil War, to be able to move into that place. I know that when it started with all of the taking it down, not taking it down, then when we found out that, in fact, there were bodies that was buried on that ground, it then was a part of history. Now, Steve Hochmiller may argue the point as to whether or not it was a hospital, but, you know, that's what it is. It's important to me, and I do take care of it. We have got a situation with the apartment building that is right beside it that is the worst of the worst since I have been in council. I left Sunday after being down at the Dagmar, and I go, and there is a trash can filled with trash in the middle of where the door is at, and stones that have been thrown the whole way. And they're our stones, and they're, you know, rocks that are like this. But then we come to bricks, and I have one in my car, that it's going to take a pretty hefty kid to throw the brick, all right? So, I proceed to take the trash can over, and I have four males sitting on the little porch, and two females and some children. And I said, "Well, I guess that this belongs over here," and of course, nobody has a comment for me, and one grunted out, "Well, we don't know." I said, "Well, I'm putting it here." And I do want you to know, this is public, private, this is private property. It is taken care of by me down here as far as the greenery, and I would appreciate that no one in this apartment building destroy what I have done. Either we put a camera on this place to see exactly what is going on, because now it is under another new person who has purchased it. The last person didn't do a great job, but did a better job as having a person in-house to see what was happening.
Talking about the apartment building?
Apartment building, correct. And it's new owner now, all right? And I believe that we actually met the new owner, because he wanted to know exactly what was we doing down there, and this was a couple of weeks ago. "Well, we're planting flowers, because this is a historic property." "Well, that's wonderful, do you do it anywhere else?" And he's in his SUV, he's going over looking at the property, and believe me, he was not a tenant there, and I don't believe he was selling anything either, okay? But it's really disheartening when you go and you do what you think is benefiting, and it is, and it looks good. But it's very frustrating to me, so either we put a camera there or we do something, because I'm telling you, if I'd had a police officer, I would have been in jail that day, all right? And that was Sunday. But I need to bring it to your attention, it just really infuriates me, as to, this is what we're seeing, okay? Also, this morning, and this was appalling, and it has nothing to do really with us, it has to do with the school board, and I will call there. There are children that live on our street that are special needs children. They get picked up right in front of their house, as well as Head Start does too. And I was sitting in my car, going over my packet, because I knew if I got out of the car, I'd put the packet somewhere, and then I wouldn't pick it back up until tonight. So, I was going through it, and I heard this pickup truck beeping its horn at the school bus. Did it five times. He's sitting there, he's cursing, he's going through this whole procedure. I, as a bus driver, would have had to have gotten out of the bus, but that's me.
You'd have been arrested again.
But again, I just, you know, this is what we've come to, this is what we've come to, and I'm really tired of it. Now, I know that you all thought I was off the wall last Tuesday, when I, in fact, brought up about the issue of the mail that was out at Walmart. Well, there has been some people now that have, actually has gone in and has checked, and Ocean City has, no, no, Wowood has adopted, okay? On their boardwalk, they will not have or tolerate this as far as the dropping of the pants, and if you're caught, it's $200. Ocean City is also looking at it. Now, there's people looking for cities for me, but this is where we have, we've gone from what was sanity into what is now, and they can look at it and say, "Oh, they're just teenagers." No, it's more than just teenagers. There are adults who are doing it as well. So, when I say things, I'm really not off the wall, I really do have the facts in back of me. And I know we're not going to do code, but believe you me, I'd like to be sometimes in the back of them and be able to just rip those pants the rest of the way down. And that's the end of my comments for tonight.
You've been arrested three times.
Probably. I keep, I kept telling Chief Smith, I kept telling him, "You're going to see me in jail before you see anybody else."
Mr. Metzner.
I will be the first one, and certainly not the last, and so I will be brief, but it's gotten to be a habit of the Blues Fest, it's become an expectation now, so the one that's a massive success, it's like, "Another Blues Fest." So, congratulations to absolutely everybody. And just like I got amazed many years ago, when I would see 15 minutes after the mummers' parade was over, the whole streets would be clean, I had some people, I shocked as how fast the Blues Fest was cleaned up, as they were as good as it was. So, congratulations to everyone, and it was nice that we lost money on rain insurance this year, it's about time.
I would concur with you, and I had some friends from out of town who came up, who've never been to the Blues Fest, and they all said how well organized it was, the flow of everything, it was just a very high-quality event. So, I echo your congratulations to the committee and all the sponsors for helping make it happen. Mr. Brubaker.
Yeah, well, I, I, of course, second what Councilman Metzner said about the Blues Fest, it was great, as usual. And one thing I want to talk about that we often don't mention is what a great thing for us to talk to folks. I mean, I don't know how many folks I had interactions with and got feedback about, not just city issues, but ideas, things going on in the community. It's really a great venue to do that. And I walked up, and the restaurants on Potomac, on the A and E District, anecdotally seemed to be doing well, because sometimes we hear that there's not an overflow, and to me, it looked like there was good attendance at the times I walked up there. So, you know, I think, anecdotally, that we do have that, that overflow impact. So, you know, what a great weekend, what a good job.
Mr. Alchar.
Couple of things, the first is, you know, I attended a little bit of the Blues Fest as well. I would only say that, you know, as a body, we process the paperwork, it's really the staff and other folks to make it happen. And, you know, this, this one was no exception to that, and I think everybody enjoyed that, and I think that they see it. The second is, as I have indicated, I would still be interested in identifying one or two folks within this community that maybe could present to this body a greater or more depth explanation of how the sheltering services work in our urban core. You know, it's no secret, if you count, if you count up, you know, there are dozens. It does have an impact on the quality of life within our community. It clearly appears to be an industry that is growing, and growing within our downtown, and clearly spreading, you know, out into the more suburban areas of the city proper. And, and I think that, you know, some explanation of how that whole process works, because the information that I've been receiving, you know, doesn't, for me, as your average citizen, paint the best picture. And the reason I say that is, you know, there clearly is a precedent that our actions as a body do not infringe on the rights of individuals to receive services. You know, that, that, that's clearly part and parcel to what we do and our responsibility. However, at the same token, I've said this before, there is a balancing act whereby we have an equal responsibility to protect the quality of life for those citizens impacted. And the greater imbalance that occurs from one or the other is going to have an overwhelming impact. Either subsidy will outweigh our ability to, to provide for it adequately, or we outweigh the ability for subsidy to exist. And, and I just don't feel we are balanced on that within this community, especially when you compare us to other communities across the state. And, and I don't think that we have an adequate understanding of just how it is continuing to evolve, especially in this community. The last item is, I received the, the email from staff regarding the Schuster concrete plant application. Certainly understand that, you know, if that is the direction, that's the direction. I think MD has scheduled a public hearing, but I don't know what that date is, I don't recall off the top of my head. But I think it's important that citizens are aware that, you know, the public hearing is occurring. I think MD is putting that on. For folks to be able to go and hear exactly, you know, what's being proposed, because, you know, when you, as an average citizen like myself, you get a piece of paper saying that there's going to be this 174-horsepower diesel-fired engine, you know, crushing rocks 10 hours a day, I don't really know what that means. I don't know what time of day that means, I don't know what type of noise level that is, I don't know any of those details. So, you know, the best thing I think we can do in trying to, to, to exist in that cooperative fashion between residential neighborhood and industrial uses is for the residents to be able to understand exactly what that means. I certainly couldn't envision that type of plant, which is going to be a mobile plant on that property, which is a large property, you know, parking itself yards away from a place like the Big Dipper, and then expecting the Big Dipper to sort of operate as it always does, or always has, you know, in that capacity, it just, so there's got to be some, some greater level of communication among the parties.
Let me stop you there, because I want to know with this, when there is zoning, is there notification that goes out to who? Because I don't remember now. Like with the fence, I don't remember if it was neighbors around? Because as far as, because Kristin, honestly, unless you have somebody on the ground that's going to tell the citizens that live out there, it will happen before they even know it, and they have to be aware of the fact, and they need to be at the hearing.
And like I said, most folks may not have an issue with it.
Well, and they may not, but the thing is, is that they still need to know that it is happening. And a lot of people, they, they aren't, you know? It's just like what happened was the gray area of Elm Prospect, where we've got a recycling place that these people are living in hell, but that's just the way it is. It's a gray area, and nobody knows what to do. But I'm just saying, if it's not our responsibility to let the neighborhood know, then you're going to have to do something.
Thanks. Mr. Munson.
Okay, I would like to express my congratulations on the Blues Fest. I was there the whole time, Thursday night, Friday night, missed two hours Saturday morning, but I was there the rest of the day, and I was there all day Sunday. It was extraordinary. It was extraordinary, and everybody involved needs to be complimented for probably what was the best Blues Fest we've ever had. I was, I was especially impressed on Sunday, because when I looked at the crowd, I must have seen somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 people in City Park enjoying themselves, and, and it was, it was just spectacular. And, you know, this Blues Fest puts us on the map. When, after the concert, last concert was over on Sunday, and we all stood up, I turned to the people next to me and said, "You all from Hagerstown?" And one guy says, "No," he said, "I'm from Montgomery County, I come up here to this every year." And the lady said, "No, I'm from Baltimore County, I like this, I come up here every year too." And the other lady said, "Yeah, I'm from Hagerstown, I work for the Health Department." But the fact is, this has a, a big draw, and people bring, bringing people from the outside. Now, one of the reasons it was so successful was because of the weather, obviously, the best weather that we've had in years for a Blues Fest. And I think we got, got to give credit to God and Lou Scali, in that order. And now, having said that, I would also like to commend, in particular, Junior Mason and the Parks Department. Our park, our city park has never looked better for this Blues Fest. And the rest of the parks in the community are looking better than they've ever looked to at this point, I think, especially the Rotary Park, that's just absolutely gorgeous, and going to get better, if I recall, we have a grant to do some work there. So, Junior Mason and his, his men and women have done a spectacular job as a part of the Blues Fest thing. And, you know, I, I think we can be very grateful for, for city employees who take these responsibilities right into their hearts. That's it.
You're here.
Dave, I forgot, and I've got John back there, and he'll probably choke me. Our Neighborhood's First, all right? We are allocated $1,000, all right, each year. And in the past, what we've done, when there's been National Night Out, we usually get the hot dogs for them, and other Neighborhoods First will get the rolls. If there's any funding that is left over, then we designate it either to go back into the fairgrounds, such as the entrance building, and last year, because of the Police Athletic Club getting started, we asked if we could go ahead and give it to the Police Athletic Club, because they are taking care of the kids that are at risk, kids in our community. John had a concern about that, because we were giving it to an agency. He said, "I should bring it before council to get approval of that happening. If there is a problem, I can give it again to the city, back to the city." But I don't understand why there would be a problem when we are servicing the kids in the city of Hagerstown, and it is connected with the Police Department. So, I just need to know, council members, because you are the ones that have to give me the yea or nay, if I can do it or not.
You're talking about leftover funds-
Leftover funding from the $1,000 allocation- Because we cannot, right, we cannot roll it over. I mean, if we could roll it over, we could do great things.
I would suggest you do one of two things, depending on how the city administrator feels comfortable, either directly to the Police Athletic League, or back to the city, and the city give it to the Police Athletic League.
I don't care.
No, I know you don't care which way, but whichever way would fit with-
You know, when they get to the point-
With the best methods for, for the city, you want to get it to PAL, and you don't care how you get it there.
Right, and if, when they get to the point of their funding, that they have more, because they were able to have one teacher this year, and, you know, it's an expense, and if there's any way that we can help out.
If Mayor Councilor will pay, I think it's fair to have it go from Neighborhoods First. We just saw with the agency contribution item on the agenda today, we had to at least acknowledge to the council it's going to-
You know, I mean, like I said, when before, when it first started, we were $5,000.
I'm fine with it.
The other thing I would say, because there's other, there's other Neighborhoods First, is that when it's gone, it ought to be recorded somewhere.
Yeah, because like, no, 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 last year-
All the Neighborhoods First, if they do something.
They are, they are, because like, like City Park, City Park, when they were putting the doll, City Park, when we were putting the dog park over there, City Park Neighborhoods First, Historic Whatever, sent out a mass email that if you had funds left, would you mind donating it to the dog park? Okay? Same difference to me.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dave.
That's okay. No, I'm, you know, there's never a shortage of exciting things to do here in Hagerstown.
And I'm so excited today that it's like-
One of, you know, this week especially, there are three forums happening. One happened last night for Board of Education candidates at the Educational Farm off of Downsville Pike, and so that was a very informative discussion. It allowed me to see firsthand who these candidates are, what their positions are. I would encourage all citizens to either watch it on Antietam Cable or otherwise find the information for themselves about every candidate. On Thursday, it will be candidates for the state delegates, also at the farm on Downsville Pike, and Commissioner candidates forum is same place on Friday the 6th. All the, the start times are 6:30 for, for those events. Also on Friday evening, I hope everyone stops by downtown for the- Also on Friday evening, I hope everyone stops by downtown for the Antietam Velo Clubs kickoff for the Washington County Criterion.
Next Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Friday, the 13th, yes. Friday, the 13th, so put the, mark your calendars now, and hopefully everybody will come downtown. I just want to do a shout out to an effort the Community Free Clinic is, is doing, they're collecting gently-used shoes, and I'm willing to take them in the mayor's office. If people bring them to City Hall, I'll collect them myself and take them over there, so-
I knew I should have put that bag of shoes in my car.
So, yeah.
Do you, honestly?
Yeah, seriously.
Honestly, my daughter was wrong.
I've already, I've already started collecting them at school, so I might as well collect them here too.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Does the mayor definitely have a movie showing at City Park, if it's Friday?
This Friday, 8 o'clock, Frozen.
It's frozen for all, for all those have little children.
It's frozen for all those have five-year-old little girls.
And it's part of a series with others throughout the summer, other A-movies throughout the summer.
And I would echo the compliments to the Parks and Rec staff. There was a letter that was received that was shared with us from a lady in Pennsylvania who has been going there since the 1950s, and she was very complimentary. There's great programming happening, they're going to be doing like a splash or a dive-in movie, so movies at the pool to increase, you know, interest and attendance at the pool, so there's lots of great things going on, and just encourage everyone to get out there and do something. All right, with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.